Throughout his career, Wong has poured part of the proceeds from his investments into the Grace and Mercy Foundation. That's a Christian charity he started in 2006. On its website, Grace and Mercy describes itself as "a private grant-making foundation focused on supporting the poor and depressed and helping people learn, grow, and serve." Three says it also promotes public reading of the Bible, something near and dear to Wong, who is known as a Christian apologist, known for quoting scripture in meetings.
Jesus says, "I'm the bread of life. If you come to me, you will never be hungry again. Your people will be my people, and your God will be my God. My company does a little bit about creating the fear of price to hold the stock price. Is it important to that? Absolutely."
Kevin's raising that his religious conviction made him extremely comfortable with risk.
When you move into the plot where you make these highly concentrated bets, you are talking about your top investments, but in some of these names, fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the overall voting of that name is just this one person. On one giant farm with hundreds of institutional investors, like one person having such an outside appearance, that in some ways is a mystery. Kevin, he wasn't scared by it. He wasn't worried by it when he considered investing that way. I think he wanted to say he was operating with the same right to his capital.
Three says for a long time that risk-taking had hit off. He made tens of millions of dollars in the South Market with highly-leveraged bets.
Those bankers said, "Yeah, I will put up some money. You give me some leverage. You go on and buy and stop."
And it is most notably with ViacomCBS, he borrowed money from a bank, and that bank bought the shares.
It would go under your name if the price goes up. Now, you have money if the price goes down. You get the money. I will pay you.
And it was no puffball for Wong actually doing this. Wong was making deals like this at several different banks, a tune of billions of dollars. But none of them knew this so, and the scam Wong's investments.
It meant all the great fits, which is why they were able to do this. Which is why this whole price plan.
By looking around to a bunch of different lenders making these kinds of deals, Wong was able to amass bigger and bigger positions in companies he believed in, which drove up their stock prices. He turned $200 million into more than $36 billion because of the way these transactions were structured, because data analysis or any subject to any stretch of disclosure was required. Tracey's Wong was able to take on extremely large stakes in other companies under the radar.
If you think about that, with the market buying the stocks straight up, you can't work with a price level, you can't work with a price level changing.
But because of his situation, Wong became effectively ViacomCBS's single largest shareholder. So while the stock prices kept rising, Wong kept making money, and the companies he invested saw their share prices skyrocket because of Wong's investments. But Kevin says that change did warrant a completely new one. There was a problem with ViacomCBS.
Their price was going up so much, as a bill, they didn't know that they decided to do a secondary option on the stock. That changed the basis of the prices, the price of the stock, because there's more supply. And the bankers thought, oh, they're losing. If another stock keeps going up, there's people ready to buy. And so we could definitely do that, we could definitely do that.
The problem was they couldn't. They didn't know Wong was responsible for the bulk of the buying. ViacomCBS was starting to play. And after this, they were able to. They told Wong, and said, basically, the stock prices will be down, and you will pay us. They couldn't. They were paying us a lot. Over the course, it would be Wong's fortune managed, which was $36 billion, which apparently nothing. And the show was, it was a classic, Wong took over the markets. And what he's saying, the worst, the worst, the worst, the worst, the worst, the worst million dollars in the aftermath, Tom Scott stopped. It makes the video on TV to explain what happened. Our cables were situated. It's not being really well sorted by US related, because that was a very mysterious and complex situation, very obvious. Uh, which had some limitations in terms of disclosure. It was certainly not only a credit squeeze issue, but we certainly had, uh, uh, higher exposures than others. That video, Socratic situation, contributed to the end of that story in Swissman.
And it's so doesn't exist. The common debt to credit Suisse may not be listed as our cables, but it's suddenly created.
And prosecutors have resolved to hold Bill Wong to account. Three says the Justice Department unsealed a string of charges against him in 2022. Wong's trial is expected to last six to seven weeks. The US government has charged Wong with eleven criminal counts. David Williams, the US attorney for the Southern District of New York, spoke to reporters about the case in April of 2022. He's saying that he's a bacteria, he's a serious, he's a terrorist, he fired a bomb, and he's a Russian journalist, he is a terrorist. The US Attorney General, Mr. Trump, says this is a historic case. This is the big day. I'm David Hurd. This episode was produced by Alex Semura and David Fong. It was edited by Stacy Van Exsmann and David Shear. It was mixed by Alex Semura. It was fact-checked by Adrian Atagi. Our secret producers are Naomi Shaden and Kim Giddles. Our senior editor is Elizabeth Conso. Nicole Beaster-Gore is our executive producer. St. John is our head of podcasts. Special thanks to Matt Goldman and Victoria Black for Danielle. Thanks for listening. You're listening to the podcast of Light Heart on Bloomberg Radio. Broadcasting 24 hours a day, Bloomberg.com and the Bloomberg Business App, powered by more than 27 hundred journalists and analysts in over 120 countries. This is East Bloomberg Radio. From Bloomberg News, I'm Ed Baxter with your top stories this hour. Congress racing for the Friday Democratic Party, the Democratic Party delayed new technology upgrades, dollar projects, complicated hiring. Now, senators have agreed to a contentious component requiring automatic refunds for some.
Gentlemen, welcome to the second meeting of the Second May Meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we'll call the cases. I think in this case, we may reverse the order of the cases on the agenda. Mr. Pollak, are your clients here for case 0170?
I'm afraid I don't see them yet.
All right, well, then, if they don't walk in before we get started, we'll start with the other cases. We call the cases maybe in the order in which they appear on the agenda, maybe not, and ask the appellant to step forward, be sworn in, and be seated in the chairs to my right, and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. We then ask them to step down and solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal and anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. After that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there's any contribution from their office. And following that, if any information has a reason that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. This evening, the agenda consists of, things are a little unusual, in that the agenda consists of one case, which is 0133. I believe that's the one that was everything but the parking for the Steeplegate Mall, which is a case that we actually had heard before and closed the hearing. But because it was quite a while ago, and because some of the details may have changed, we are going to consider it as a new hearing, which is to say, we will ask the appellant to come forward and so on and so forth, and we will admit public testimony, which we don't normally do after we have closed the public testimony of a hearing. In the case of 0142, which is, involves the same parties in the same address, that is a new case this evening, so that's, we will deal with in the usual way. Since cases 0142 and 0133 are closely related, we will ask the appellant to make their presentation on both at the same time. The cases then are 270 Loudon Road, Gateway Performance District, Onyx Steeplegate Concord LLC, requesting to reopen public testimony, which we will be doing. Variances, actually, yeah, variances to off-street parking requirements to allow fewer spaces than required. Lot 40 and 41 Costco JC Penney, 943 spaces where 113 are required. Lot 40-2 mixed-use residential fitness recreational retail, 10, 1,019 spaces where 2,055 are required. And Lot 41, Appleby's Restaurant, 56 spaces where 68 are required. Also a variance from Article 28.711B, alternative parking arrangements, construction of fewer parking spaces to allow the planning board to authorize the construction of fewer parking spaces on Lot 40 and 40-1 Costco JC Penney, without showing that a sufficient land area is allocated and shown on a site plan for the full number of spaces required. We are also hearing then case 0133, 270 Loudon Road, GWP Gateway Performance District, Onyx Steeplegate Concord LLC, requesting reopening of public testimony in the redevelopment of the Steeplegate Mall property into a mixed-use development. For this multi-building, multi-lot project, the applicant requests the following variances. Article 28.41H Table of Dimensional Regulations Maximum Height, to allow a maximum height of 59 feet 8 inches where 45 feet is allowed. Article 28.24J Table of Principal and Accessory Uses, to allow a tire center, J8, where prohibited in a GWP. Article 28.41C Table of Dimensional Regulations Minimum Lot Frontage, to allow frontage to be calculated based on the combination of frontages on a corner lot, rather than the calculation along one street as required. Article 28.41H Table of Dimensional Regulations Maximum Lot Coverage, to allow 91% coverage where 85% is allowed. Article 28.77F Driveway Widths, to allow a 30-foot driveway width where 28 feet is the maximum. Article 28.77J Illumination of Parking Areas, to allow light posts at 36 feet and 6 inches in height where 25 feet is the maximum. Article 28.713C Design Standards for Loading Spaces, to allow 12 feet wide loading spaces where 14 feet is the minimum. And Article 28.714E Screening of Refuge Containers, to not screen trash compactors where screening around three sides is required. I bet you never thought I was going to finish that. Is the appellant here? Please come forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and also, I could share with you that my clients for the third matter have arrived, and I don't know, I certainly don't want to make you repeat all of that later, but.
I don't know that I would have to. Would the board be okay with hearing the other case first?
Sure.
Okay, and you think he can remember all that stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. In that case, let's confuse everybody.
Sorry about that.
Let's go to case 0170, Shaker Road, 411Z49, RM Medium Density Residential District. Aaron Leclerc and Kara Scholar are the, Scala, excuse me, are the owners. And the applicant is requesting to construct a single-family home on loud use, as well as a manufacturing fabrication and assembly industry facility on a lot within the medium-density residential district RM at property located at Shaker Road, MAP 411Z Lot 49. The applicant requests a variance from Article 28.24J LI, or L1, of the table of principal uses to allow two principal uses on a lot. Do you start to tell the truth in the thing, bud?
I do.
Very good, thank you. Please identify yourselves for the record as you testify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Ari Pollak. I'm an attorney with the Gallagher Firm here in Concord, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Aaron Leclerc and Kara Scala. Kara's sitting in the front row, Aaron is to my right. They are the owners of 17 acres of unimproved property with frontage along Shaker Road in East Concord. They presently reside elsewhere in Concord, but it's their intention to build a new home on this 17-acre parcel and to relocate to the property, which would then become their primary residence. Why are we at the zoning board, you might ask? We're here to seek permission to construct a detached accessory structure, a 40-by-100-foot or 4,000-square-foot detached structure. What would it be used for? It would support and household accommodate Aaron's boat kit design and fabrication business. If, David, if you'd be kind enough, that, so that is the GIS image of the subject property. But if you backed out to the folder, you'd be able to see revised site concept plan, thank you. And once that comes up, you'd be able to see the residence in the rear and the proposed accessory building in front of it between the residence and the frontage on Shaker Road. You can also see the wetland areas depicted, as well as the proposed driveway. Right now, it's an unimproved site. As I mentioned, Aaron sells prefabricated pontoon kits that are for self-assembly by purchasers, and most of the fabrication involves the drilling of hole patterns and other assembly assistance features. The subject property is actually located in the medium-density residential district, the RM district, and most, almost all, commercial uses are prohibited in that RM district. It's intended to be primarily residential. Major home occupations, businesses out of or around your house, are actually allowed in that district, and they're allowed by special exception from this board. And we actually had applied for that special exception, and I'll tell you in a minute why we're now here for something different. A special exception may be approved by this board if it meets the criteria of Article One of the home occupation criteria, and there are numerous criteria, restricts the size of an accessory detached building to 250 square feet. So that's essentially a pool shed, if you will. It's very small. And it, and we're seeking permission to construct a 4,000-square-foot detached structure. And so, as I mentioned, we originally filed this application as a special exception request for a major home occupation and as a request for a variance from that specific dimensional limit of 250 square feet, hoping that the board would amend that to, or vary that to 4,000 square feet. After we filed those applications, city staff, and actually Tracy, who I understand has departed, the staff, not departed, she doesn't work here anymore.
Right.
Pardon, pardon my slip.
We'll edit the minutes accordingly.
I appreciate that. I meant no disrespect. City staff advised that a variance from the accessory building limit was not procedurally available for us, and that frankly, a straight-up variance for a different use was needed. And so, as a result of that, what we've done is we've repackaged the application, and it's been noticed appropriately, we've repackaged the application to seek a variance from the land use table, to pursue a manufacturing fabrication and assembly industries use in the RM district. That sounds very industrial, but really, what we want is a home occupation with a bigger building. I'll tell you, interestingly, I had a bit of a back-and-forth with the city solicitor on this. The Supreme Court actually reviewed a case from New Ipswich in 2011, where almost exactly the same occurrence was presented. A variance was granted from an exception criteria, and then the exception was considered and granted. It wasn't the focus of the case. I think the solicitor's office determined that the language surrounding that issue was dicta and not a holding, but nonetheless, the comparison is strikingly similar. And so, we hope to rely on that as a way to bypass the planning board and to simply have a home occupation approved and then receive a building permit to pursue the home occupation. Instead, procedurally, where we're left is applying for a variance for a manufacturing, a non-residential use of the property, and then going through the planning board for a non-residential element of a site plan, or a non-residential site plan. It will still have a house on it, it will still look exactly like what you see on the screen, it will still be Aaron and Kara's primary residence, it will still be very little development on 17 acres, but we are having to run around a circle to get there. Relative to the business that Aaron operates, there's a few facts to be aware of. It's not a retail business. Aaron's business is, has no customer coming to the property, there's nobody showing up to shop inventory. The business is focused on the design and manufacturing of these assembly kits with parts and accessories, and the finished parts are either delivered or shipped to customers who then assemble elsewhere. The building that is sought by variance would allow a single 4,000-square-foot commercial building. That includes the ability to, you know, close doors and windows, keep all fabrication noise well-contained. There's an area for storage of raw materials and of, you know, test-fitting kits and so forth, and some products that are in the midst of assembly for fit, and then they get shipped. As I mentioned, Aaron is the landowner, he'd be the resident and the proprietor of the business, he's the sole employee of the business. The subject lot is oversized by all standards for the medium residential district, and his placement of the outbuilding would comply with the applicable setbacks and certainly the coverage requirements. As I mentioned, products are shipped, so there's no particular traffic issue, and Aaron's business does not require parking areas beyond what's necessary for his residential use of the property. He would need to go to the planning board, he would have to have his site plan reviewed, so items of technical compliance would be reviewed there as well, and any signage would really be for the purpose of wayfinding for deliveries, not for customers or for advertising. In terms of the arguments in favor of a use variance from the land use table, the hardship essentially is that the property is located in the RM district, and the minimum lot size there is 40,000 square feet if you don't have a municipal sewer connection, in other words, if you're running on septic, and 12,500 square feet if you have a municipal sewer connection. And given these small lot sizes, multiple principal uses would probably present interferences with surrounding abutters. In this case, however, even with the sewer, without sewer, rather, you're 17 times the minimum size and almost 60 times the minimum size with sewer service available. And the presence of wetlands, as shown on the concept plan, really reduces the ability to subdivide and develop this for the principal permitted uses of residential development. You'd really be jumping around a lot of wetlands or seeking permission to fill and disturb and impact those wetlands. And so, in essence, our hardship is that we want a major home occupation but couldn't ask for it, and we couldn't therefore ask for a special exception, but we really line up well with all of that criteria, with the exception of one building that is far less developed than what could be proposed residentially on the lot and what can be well-shielded and contained in the lot. The reasonableness of the use is that the variance for a commercial use is reasonable in this case, considering that it, again, amounts to a major home occupation that would have been allowable by special exception, and that it's, again, paired with an owner who's going to reside in the house and operate the business. No employees, no customers, fits within the setbacks. The public interest, I think, is served in this limited circumstance, in the sense that a commercial, non-residential building is, it's not going to irritate those that surround with permitted uses, and it's very consistent with the sort of post-pandemic work-from-home trend, which in turn reduces commuter traffic emissions, fossil fuels and so forth. Spirit and intent of the ordinance, I mentioned that commercial uses are certainly not encouraged in this district, but that home occupations are allowed specially, and that this lot is significantly larger than what the minimum would be, so that in this limited circumstance, the business and the residents and the neighbors, I think, can coexist quite nicely. And there is no evidence to suggest that the immediately surrounding properties would suffer any devaluation as a result of the detached commercial building being next door with the house next to that. Put differently, I think, there's really no reason to conclude that the building on a large lot would impair any of what's going on around it. That's our presentation. Aaron, of course, is with me, he knows his business best, and if any of the board members have questions for he or I, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions in the board?
What is going on around it? I see large swaths of empty land.
There are other, the lots are fairly deep, if we can go back to the GIS, and so there are other residential properties that surround it, and there are some unimproved backlots.
Okay.
Yes?
Maybe, I'm surprised that, so you don't need a variance for the use? The use is not permitted, but the way the variance is phrased is you just need a variance for multiple.
We do need a variance for the use. What we are backing into as a result of the unavailability of a special exception for home occupation business is two principal uses on the property. One residential, which is certainly allowed, could be built today, and one that is non-residential and is not allowed in that district.
So?
So a variance from the land use table.
Because of the size of the building.
That is correct.
Because you can't vary a special exception criteria.
Correct.
So it's phrased as to allow two principal uses, but one of those uses is not allowed?
One is residential and allowed, the other is a variance.
But, I mean, maybe it doesn't really matter that much, but if you had two uses that were, either one is allowed.
You would still need a variance, sir. The ordinance only allows one principal use per property.
So, why, I mean, why don't you need a variant, two variances, one for the two uses and one for the non-allowed use?
They do.
So, the first home use does not need a variance, it's an allowed use.
Right.
He needs a variance for the business use, fabrication portion of that.
Right.
And then they need a variance for having two principal uses on the lot.
Well, authorizing that second one is authorizing the two principal uses, yes.
Okay.
I think if it were, I.
I see what you're saying.
I agree, and I think if it were phrased.
I don't think it matters too much. I guess if we approve this, then the city's okay with it.
Correct. I think if it were phrased, if I could, as a motion to approve a variance for a non-residential use, which results in two principal uses, we would cover both issues adequately.
Correct.
And the table of uses is the relevant section, so it's all under that section.
That's correct.
Okay, I understand.
Other questions? David, did you have some?
When I have a comment, or I'll let the public speak first, but I would like a condition in there that I'd like you to consider. That's all.
Any other questions? I, am I correct in reading this map that all the frontage for this lot is on Shaker Road?
That is correct.
Yes.
The lot has wetlands on it.
It does.
So, would it be a reasonable surmise that subdividing and developing this lot further would be extremely difficult to do?
We have no intentions of doing so.
And the answer is it certainly would have significant. And the answer is it certainly would have significant challenges.
So I have one more question. Looks like all of the surrounding lots are unimproved or maybe very lightly improved?
They are, if I could, they are improved with residences.
Oh.
Here, here, here.
Oh, I see.
Let me take that, that might help with the buildings.
There you go.
You can see the buildings a little easier that way, sorry.
The further back you travel, the less developed it is, but there are residential lots on their frontage.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Sure.
Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Yes, please come forward. It's a good thing we didn't open the window. It's rare to tell the whole truth or nothing. May we have your name, please?
Ralph Wilson.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Wilson?
I am the property abouter to the north of Aaron Leclair and Kara. He's been over to the house and presented this all to us with the plot plan and everything else. He's presented himself to the neighbors in the neighborhood. He's been very forthcoming, telling us what's going on. I've known Aaron for a few years, not a lot, but I have known him and what he has proposed is a lot better for us, and I don't mean to say it this way, but it's a lot better for us in the development. And sooner or later, that land out there is going to be developed, no matter if it's wetlands or not. It's been done down at Shaker Pines, which is just down below. This board at one time allowed a variance, a grandfather clause, for a dog kennel right next door after they had operated for 30 years and didn't get a permit to do it or anything else. So I don't see why he shouldn't be allowed to have what he wants to have. There's no noise coming from it like there is from a dog kennel 24 hours a day. So I'm in favor of it.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else you'd like to be heard in favor? Can you write your name down? Can you write your name down?
Yeah.
Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joe Rich and I live at 74 Shaker Road.
You swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
Richelli, was that the last name?
Excuse me?
Richelli was your last?
Richard, like a first name.
Oh, Richard.
I live at 74 Shaker Road. I am Ralph on the other side. I openly welcome this to the neighborhood. I'd rather see a small business go in there than development for houses and stuff.
Very good.
I don't see a problem on our side of the street. I don't know about the other side of the street, but if we can have a dog kennel in the neighborhood, I don't see the reason why me and can't have a business.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Swear to tell the truth or nothing, bud.
I do.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Donald Catterett. My wife and I own the property at 65 Shaker Road, which is right across the street from Mr. Wilson's house. Again, Aaron came over and proposed this whole plan to us, told us what he was gonna do and explained everything about how, what he wanted to put there. Both my wife and I agree that it's his hard-earned money. He should be able to do what he wants with the property that he paid for. So we're both fully in favor of it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth or nothing, bud. May we have your name, please?
My name is Sarah with an H, Morrison, and I live at 59 Shaker Road, which would be basically kind of a corner to this property. And I just want to say that I have no issue with what's being proposed. I think the last time I was here, it was a cluster house, housing development that was being proposed here and that's, this is certainly a better option than that from our perspective. I think my only continued concern with that area is the water and the drainage under Shaker Road, but I think that's a planning board discussion, so as far as this variance, I have no issue with it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
The only thing that I talked to Ari, when he presented the case, Packard Lee, we had a lot of discussion about it, I would like a condition if the board would consider that they do meet the requirements of a major home occupation because it really protects the neighborhood well, except for 28530C:2, that's the one that restricts it to 250 square feet. No problem.
I'm on it.
Sorry?
I'm on it.
Sorry. Thank you. And as far as the size of the building, other than it's associated with major home occupation, if he wanted that big of a woodshed, we would never stop it. So the size, don't let the size scare you from that standpoint. It's his property, he gets an appropriate permit, site plan, he can build the building.
Very good.
What are the key elements of the major home up beyond, beside the?
So the use is subordinate to a single-family detached dwelling. It is primarily a non-retail use. He's explained that one, not more than 25% of the habitable floor of the dwelling unit if they were inside the dwelling would be.
6:29 PM.
6:29.
Someone touched their watch.
Proprietor of the home, major home occupation, the owner, occupant of the property. Not more than four persons may be employed in the business. The lot of major home occupation is established, shall conform to the minimal dimensional standards, which we do. Retail sales shall be limited to incidental sales of goods which are manufactured, assembled, or grown on-site. The use will not create excessive traffic, noise, fumes. Parking shall be provided as provided in the standards. A single on-premise sign is allowed. I already talked to him, he's gonna have wayfinding signs. And the use is not one that's listed here as not being available, but he's not those.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. I'll invite discussion by the board, starting with Mr. Waller.
I don't really have any issues with this project. Since we, we heard something similar a while ago regarding the motorcycle place, it was in Pennacook, where there would be no public, minimal public access to the operation. They would primarily be internal. So I think I'm leaning to supporting the request as is.
Very good. Mr. Davy?
To be clear, the variance, as we're discussing it, is for two uses.
Yes, on the same lot.
Yes.
And for the commercial use on the lot.
And we're boxing it into commercial. Yeah, I, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. Andrew?
Yeah, when I first was looking at it, I was-
If I could, I would support, sorry. I would support Mr. Hall's conditions, anyway.
Yeah. I was, I was a little suspicious at first, honest, when I'm looking at, you know, what's presented as a manufacturing business, but it's not a small structure, but as it was explained, given the size of the lot, the fact that it's, you know, we're gonna put these conditions on, which only the homeowner will be the only employee and it's, it's just prefabricating materials that are gonna be shipped out, so it's relatively limited in the total scope, so I, so I'm okay with it.
Ms. Specter-Morgan?
I normally cannot find a hardship for a use variance, but given that this use would be permitted as a home occupation but for the size of this building, I am willing to grant this variance with the condition of approval that it comply with all of the other special exception criteria.
I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Do you need better findings of fact than what we have given you? Okay.
We need him to say yes, that's-
Okay.
Would you care to come forward?
Could leave the party space, too.
And bring however many people with you you think is appropriate?
That's my better judgment than I know.
Do we need to shift chairs around?
Do we need to do what?
Shift chairs around.
I think it's by, let's see what they say.
Do we have, do we not have enough chairs?
We, if I could have some, we sit here and here, then we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Doug, are you coming?
Yeah.
Well, now that we have the easy one left.
Yeah, yeah, should be a breeze. Which one do you want to start with?
It-
Doesn't matter, do them both?
So just a quick question. Yeah, I think if I could do both of them in succession, then it would be my preference to start with a reopening and a refresher of the prior application. And I, and I say that for a couple of reasons. I'm not sure everyone here tonight was here in January and also, January was a long time ago, so.
I support that.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Okay, super. So for your record, I am still Ari Pollak of the Gallagher Firm and I'm here now for Onyx Partners Limited and the developer agent, Onyx Steeplegate Concord. And with me this evening is Doug Richardson, an executive vice president of development for Onyx, and to his right, Wayne Morrell of Jones and Beach Engineering. We also have Robert Del Salvo of Embark Design, our architectural group, as well as some representatives from Costco in the gallery and specifically Mark Marchisano, Costco's director of development. When we last left off in January, we had gone through a presentation that explained that, is there, there's music playing? It must be outside?
Yeah.
No, it's just in your head.
Wouldn't surprise me.
There's no music, Eric. It's, but you just, you just keep going.
Well, when the music stops, I'm off this ride.
I'm pretty, pretty sure it's a good thing we didn't open the window.
Anyhow, when we were here last, we explained that Onyx is proposing a complete redevelopment of both the Steeplegate Mall property and the Regal Cinema property. The mixed-use proposal includes three multifamily residential apartment buildings and there isn't-
Who do you want up there?
I was just gonna say, I think if you go to the ZBA presentation slides on the bottom tab, thank you very much, and if you just paged, page, one more, that's the existing right there, that'll, that'll suffice for the moment. Three multifamily residential apartment buildings on essentially the right side of the page as you're looking at it. Six new or existing retail buildings, preservation, excuse me, of an existing fitness use and preservation of an existing commercial indoor recreation facility, that's the trampoline park. All of the variances we're asking for tonight relate to Lot 40, the former Steeplegate Mall property and for clarification, the applicant proposes redevelopment with a re-subdivision that would place the existing Applebee's and the existing Bank of New Hampshire on separate lots with separate ownership. We're not asking the board to approve that, of course, but that is the developer's concept. These two properties are not participating in the redevelopment, but they are part of the existing condominium and so if those owners ultimately agree with our plans, the condo would be dissolved and those lots would stay as they are now, developed and operating with bank and restaurant. And so, again, to be clear, we're not asking the zoning board to comment on dissolution of a condominium, we're asking you to consider the developer's concept for redevelopment. The entirety of the site is within the city's Gateway Performance District. The redevelopment site is bisected by two proposed streets. You've got the one that's running left to right and then the one that's running top to bottom from the left to right. We've discussed each with city staff, they are proposed to be public streets and they have connecting driveways and aisleways for the interior development and uses of the site. Onyx is presently an applicant for a comprehensive development plan for what amounts to a subdivision in a city performance district. That's the trigger for that. It was presented to the planning board last fall and then it was tabled because of things like zoning relief. So here we are. As the chair read at the beginning of the meeting, we, we were here, we are here for the following pieces of relief, and I'll get into each, but just so you can have them in your head. We're asking for height relief to allow five-story residential buildings on two of the multifamily residential. We are asking that a tire center be allowed within the Costco footprint as an accessory use. I'll get into why that's even necessary shortly. We're asking for a, the minimum lot frontage for the bank property to be calculated around a corner as opposed to one linear strip. We're not altering the dimension, we're just altering the consideration of the corner. We're asking that the maximum lot coverage be increased from 85% by ordinance to 91%. I can tell you that the current existing condition exceeds that, it's 94%. In January, we also proposed parking, a global parking variance for the entirety of the redevelopment. I will tell you candidly that that got entirely too confusing and at the suggestion of several people, including several board members, we, we responded by withdrawing that request, repackaging and refiling that request. And so that's actually the reason you have two applications for this property in front of you and on your agenda tonight. Back through the, the list of what we went through in January, we asked for a variance to allow slightly wider driveway aisles on the Costco lot. Quite simply, it's 30 feet where 28 is allowed. We asked for taller and therefore fewer lampposts in the Costco and JCPenney parking lot. We asked for narrower spaces in the loading dock. Again, it's hard to imagine that these items are handled in the zoning ordinance, but they are and therefore variances are required to deviate. And we asked lastly for a, an exception to the screening of refuse containers, which otherwise would be required, but in our instance, we've got a proposal for a compactor and not an open dumpster, and I'm gonna show you some pictures and you'll agree with me that they're quite lovely. The, so drilling down to each of the variance requests, the first is maximum height and as I said, we're, we're seeking three, permission for three multifamily apartment buildings on the right side of the map and those are essentially the yellow buildings. Somebody has a pointer. Oh, yeah, I'll definitely use that. What could possibly go wrong?
Push this little button.
Thank you, sir. Yep, one, two, three. Building R1, which is actually, Robert, it's this one?
No.
That one. Yeah, they're not sequential, which I've been struggling with since January, but that middle one there is actually R1. That's proposed to be a five-story residential building with a height of 58 feet, 45 is allowed by right. Building R2, which I think is this guy here, is proposed to be a four and five-story mixed-use building with some non-residential commercial space and retail- building with some non-residential commercial space and retail space in the front here, on the front, on the ground floor. The five-story portions of the building would push to a maximum height of fifty-nine feet eight inches, and the third one up here across the street is proposed to be a four-story building. It has a height of forty-eight feet, so it would need a slight variance of three feet to be allowed, to be presented to the planning board. As I mentioned, the maximum height in that Gateway Performance District is forty-five feet, and so, we're seeking essentially variances to get us to fifty-nine feet eight inches in total height, the maximum height, if you will, but each of these buildings has a different proposed height, and we could certainly break that up in a motion if it was important to do so. In terms of the variance test for hardship for these items, the subject property is an assemblage of tracks comprising a redevelopment with a common theme, and a comprehensive redevelopment plan has been proposed to the planning board. The proposed multifamily building locations are not in close proximity to other residential uses, and can be placed well within lot setbacks and other buffering concerns. The proposed layout achieves the developer's desired unit count, which frankly is in flux, but we're trying to maximize, but allows placements for a walkable village atmosphere with some open space and some amenities. And it's all subject to planning board approval, of course, but amenities is part of our concept. We'd like to spread the residential footprint to, if, if we had to spread the residential footprint to more than three buildings, to achieve smaller or shorter buildings and get to the same count. What we'd end up with is placing the residential uses much closer to the box uses, and we would lose the ability to preserve some open space and to preserve some space for community amenities for those who live there. In other words, our focus would shift from a community environment to a maximized density environment. And simply fit, we, simply put, we just can't fit it all, and so, we need some relief on height to allow us to go up instead of out or to the side while preserving our current users. Again, the trampoline park and the gym would be in this building here to the east of the residential. Creating walkability along these streets and within the development, and over to the water area, and some public amenities, this waterfront area chief among them. You know, I say waterfront area and everybody snickers because frankly, this is, in today's world, nothing more than a glorified drainage ditch, but it, it could be more. And we actually had a conversation with the Conservation Commission about it being more, and I think it's fair to say that there is some excitement to see what could happen there. We've got some slides, I think later in this deck, that show even, you know, a recreation area, a sitting area, a gathering space, and even a dock. I don't expect anybody to have a boat there, and I can't imagine what would happen with hundreds of apartments fighting over one dock, but it, it can be a lot nicer than it is now, which frankly, looks like a slush way for a lot of pavement. Reasonable use, the variance for building height is reasonable considering that the district is, allows multifamily, and that a four-story structure could be accommodated without any zoning relief. So, in that context, a fifth story doesn't really change much, and it doesn't really impact others that are surrounding it when you consider the distance to other residential uses, and frankly, that those are antiquated relative to the commercial nature of the district. Zoning relief also into the three buildings would not have interference with the big-box portions of the redevelopment. We're able to have some sensible separation from the necessary larger truck vehicle traffic that serves these buildings, and not have it intertwined and running through the midst of a, a more spread-out residential area. The public interest in redeveloping underperforming properties, and I think the Steeplegate Mall can be identified as an underperforming property, it, it outweighs any concern relative to another floor of, of building height. Moreover, there's, I think, substantial community interest in developing modern, safe, affordable housing, in this case, rental housing, especially in a location that has proximity to all of the commercial services that are along the Loudon Road corridor, public transportation to the extent that it exists in Concord, it does exist there, and arterial public roadways operated both by the city and the state. The spirit and intent of the ordinance, the requested height variance, I, I think is frankly consistent with encouraging redevelopment within the Gateway Performance District. These types of sites are to be redeveloped, that is the goal of performance districting, and this redevelopment project needs the flexibility of a variance here or there to fit a successful program. Constrained by the ordinance, you simply may not be able to host developable and desirable projects. Values surrounding properties, there's really no evidence to suggest that a fifth story would have any more impact on anyone differently or, or materially than a four-story structure, and as I mentioned at the beginning, redevelopment of a long-neglected and tired, you can insert your descriptive phrases, but a, a tough property only enhance the values of those that surround it, in our opinion. I'm gonna move on through the other variance requests, but stop me anytime. The, the variance relating to the table of principal and accessory uses is relative to the Costco center that is proposed here. The plan is to have their prototypical retail facility, which includes accessory uses like gasoline sales, which actually are over here, separated from the building. The pharmacy, an optometry center, a garden center, all of those are permitted principal uses in the district, and therefore, recognized by staff as permitted accessory, excuse me, interior uses to the Costco. A tire center is also proposed, that would not be an allowed principal use, so it's not an allowed accessory use, so therefore, we're here shopping for a variance for an accessory tire center. There is, David, if you back out of this document.
No order?
I'm sorry? Out, uh, back into the folder?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. If you go to this one right here, tire center example, that is it. If you wouldn't, if you don't go in those garage doors, you wouldn't even know that a tire center is back there. That says right there, tire center. That would really be your one and only clue as to what's going on. As I mentioned, it's entirely contained within the footprint, and in terms of the variance test, the tire center is self-contained, it's really no different than the other accessory uses that are occurring in the structure. Self-contained also means noise-contained, and if you're familiar with the Sears facility that was up at the mall, they had a bustling tire center, and I don't know that anyone was deeply affected by it. In fact, I know I got my tires put on there a few times and had a wonderful experience. The, the, I will tell you that this is an integral part of the Costco business model. The, the retail nature of the whole facility is a permitted use, and we are just asking for a portion of the interior to be allowed to be a tire center. It's, in our view, reasonable because it's consistent with other accessory uses that are allowed in the district, and they exist at other Concord big-box retailers. Sears was not the only one. Sam's Club, for example, has a tire center, I haven't used that one, but it looks lovely. I don't know if Walmart has one, but it wouldn't surprise me if they do. And these are the things that you typically see when you see maybe an interior bank, or a medical facility, or some sort of immunization clinic, or other, a garden center, things that are part and parcel to these one-stop-shop retail wholesale experiences. And so, you know, simply put, it's, it's, it's part of their business model, and they're hopeful that you'll allow it. The public interest, I think, is served by redeveloping underperforming properties in a way that makes sense to consumers, who wouldn't want to have their tires changed while they are doing the rest of their wholesale shopping, and have everything done on time and on schedule, and just head home. I know, I'm looking forward to it. The spirit and intent of the ordinance, substantial justice, you know, I think a self-contained accessory tire center is not going to run afoul with the notion that these uses are not allowed in the Gateway Performance District. I think it would be one thing if it was entirely a tire center, if it was entirely outdoor storage of inventory, and you could hear the air hammers all day, and this is quite contained, the garage doors all go up and down, and I'll get into it in a minute, but take a look at the drive aisle that is here, and we'll talk a bit about the width there. Again, it's all spaced for safety, and it's all intended to not conceal so much as shield what's going on indoors. There's no evidence to suggest that the immediately surrounding properties would suffer any material devaluation of a tire center that faces Costco parking lot is largely indecipherable from the other sides of the building, and in this instance, also faces Loudon Road, which is itself a commercial strip that has other somewhat similar facilities like Mineki or maybe, I don't know, is it Midas or whatever, but Muffler people with garage doors that go up and down the same way. Moving on, the minimum lot frontage discussion, this relates to our desire to propose to the bank parcel that they could and would be benefited by being an independent lot and to dissolving the condominium. The lot is six-tenths of an acre, it's, it's currently owned as a condominium land unit, and it is simply our proposal to them, should they wish to accept it, that it would be severed from the condominium and be its own, its own thing. We're not asking you to reduce the amount of road frontage that's required by the ordinance. If you could go back, David, to the, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around on you.
We're good.
Back to the presentation slides on the bottom, the last five, sorry?
Yeah, it's already open, I just have to go back.
Okay. Ten-four, right, yeah, that'll work. So, basically, we're saying, we've got one road here, and we'll have another road here. We want to measure from here around the corner to here, and that'll get us our three hundred feet. We're not asking for deviation from the dimension itself. The hardship is essentially that we have a corner lot, and it, it's a unique circumstance where we have the right amount of road, but we don't have it in a straight line. It's reasonable, I think, because both of these, under our concept, would be public streets, and we would certainly accept a condition that this road has to be built and owned and maintained by the city in order to count as public road frontage, which I think would be the case definitionally anyhow. Public interest would be served by at least allowing us to pursue the redevelopment of an underperforming property, and, and I think the spirit and intention of the ordinance was to have a sufficient amount of frontage so that you were not cramping or constraining your neighbors or abutters with things like driveways or other accessways, and I think we can accomplish that in largely the same manner as it is now. And we don't think that the value of the surrounding property, or this parcel frankly, would be impaired by counting its frontage around the corner, because there would be no physical change to the layout of the, of the frontage along these streets. And frankly, I mean, not directly related to frontage, but it would facilitate a much larger project that will have significant beneficial impact from an aesthetic perspective, and the delivery of services, and the delivery of customers to their doorstep. Maximum lot coverage, if we go back to the file folder, please, David, there is a coverage exhibit, that's it, you know these better than I do. So, when we were here in January, we, we put this on the screen for you, it showed the existing coverage of ninety-four percent, how Costco's greening things up as much as they can, and getting down to ninety-one percent. Both numbers are above the standard of eighty-five percent, and so, we're asking for a variance to go up to ninety-one percent. Why do I say up to? I think we might be able to do a little better than that when we get to the planning board. One of the reasons we're not sure is because we have to work with cities, I should point to this one, the proposed. One of the reasons we're not sure is we have to work with city staff on the classification of this road, the width of this road, and setbacks from this road, all intended to be public. But if we have the flexibility to go up to ninety-one percent, I think we would be, we would be, have the flexibility that we need to work with those answers when we get them, and we would not have to come back here and say, oops, we meant ninety-two, which we, of course, really want to avoid. The hardship here is that this lot is intended to accommodate both a new use, the Costco, and an existing use, the JCPenney. Would it be easier if it was one or the other and not both? Yes, but that's not available to us at the moment. JCPenney has a long-term lease, and they would like to stay, so we're doing our best to accommodate both uses, and that requires some flexibility on not only coverage, but parking, which we'll get into. The, as I mentioned, this lot is currently non-conforming in its ninety-four percent coverage, and we are at least looking to improve upon that if we can't get it to compliance. I think it's a reasonable use because it allows a permitted use to remain, which is, of course, the JCPenney, and it allows us to get to better conformity. Just so you understand what you're looking at, this is the mall building where JCPenney is right here, and so, all but this box will be demolished, and JCPenney would go he, or I'm sorry, Costco would go here, which you see on the proposed side. Public interest, you know, again, the public interest in redeveloping underperforming property is really outweighs a concern, as I see it, in terms of a modest exceedance of lot coverage, and we're actually gonna be able to bring the development as a whole down below eighty-five percent. We can't do it on this lot, which is why we're asking for the variance, but if you take the cinema property, the Costco, the multi, mixed-use, the, the property across the street near the water, you take all of that together, we can get it down under eighty-five percent, and, and as a whole, it would conform. Right in this spot, it would not. And so, you know, again, certain intent of the ordinance, public interest, I think it's do the best you can when it comes to a non-conforming existing condition, and I think we're doing that. We're doing that here, improving on what's there, and we're doing that overall, bringing it into conformity. Surrounding property values, I don't know that anyone would object to less coverage, and given that we're bringing it from ninety-four to ninety-one, and maybe less than ninety-one if stars align when we get to the planning board, I think there's some real room for improvement, which only benefits those that surround us. The, the variance I presented last time for parking was repackaged, so I'm gonna skip that for a moment, and that'll be the second application. We're on to driveway width, which has its own exhibit, if you could back out again for me, I'm sorry about the.
We're good.
Mouse gymnastics. That's it. This one, the applicant here, again, on the Costco property, the Costco footprint, we're proposing thirty-foot drive aisles where you see the blue. Why are we doing that? Well, one, that's the Costco program wherever they go. Two, it's only two additional feet. Three, we have shopping carts that enable. Three, we have shopping carts that enable our consumers to buy a lot of stuff, and some of it big. And bigger stuff means more space to push big stuff, and we want to prioritize safety. We want to prioritize safety in all of these places, because it's also where our consumers will be walking when they go back and forth from their parking area to the store, but also where our trucks will come and go for deliveries, and let me remind you that this is where the tire center is located, or where we hope to locate it if we get a variance. But the loading dock, which we'll talk about in a minute, is right here, and you could have a potential traffic way this way, this way. I suspect trucks will be told to use a one-way looping route, and so whether you're coming this way, or whether you're coming this way, you're going to be on these roads with some heavier traffic, and we want to make sure that we have the width to be safe about passing trucks, passing pedestrians, passing people with carts. I know what I buy when I go to these wholesale clubs, and I usually have to bring my truck around, park right here, find somebody, unfortunate soul in the store, to help me load whatever I bought, because I can't lift it myself, and block traffic for a few minutes while I'm doing it, and extra width means safer. And here's Mark. Come on to a microphone, Mark.
May I just interrupt the...
I swear you win. Do we tell the whole truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Mark Marchisano, Director, Mark Marchisano, I'm Director of Development, Costco Wholesale. The reason I wanted to come up quickly was really just to explain how we operate. It'll, I think, more clearly explain those aisles. So the areas around the building, and it's in this scenario, it's the front three, as well as the accesses, they need to be 30 feet, really for efficiency and safety of the access of our trucks and vehicles. We do have people with carts that shop, and we need that safety as well, but they also carry those carts with vehicular traffic down our drive aisles. The difference, though, is where the shaded areas are, is that's where we have the larger trucks. And we have other activities that happen, so on the bottom, you have our dumpsters. You physically can't get those dumpsters out without having the distance. So there are requirements that we have for actual operational purposes, which really help dictate why we have those 30-foot aisles. Please sign in, sir.
Yeah, just sign the page there. Thanks, Mark. So again, it's two feet, I think to the rest of the world, that sounds like insignificant, but to Costco, it's a big deal. And, you know, again, the public interest here is to redevelop underperforming properties that are in the Performance District, and two feet seems like a pretty small give to enable that kind of a redevelopment. Spirit and intent of the ordinance, same thing, this district is encouraging flexibility of design, it's intended to encourage redevelopment, and frankly, this is the kind of redevelopment standard that's better addressed in the Site Plan Regulations, but at least for today, it lives in the ordinance. The value of surrounding properties, I think we can agree that no abutter is going to appreciate the difference between 28 feet and 30 feet of width here, and if anything, maybe it reduces some congestion, which would be to the good, not the bad. Illumination of parking areas, David? We have, we have a nighttime exhibit, actually, well, let's go to the next one, right there. Thank you very much. That is a Costco site recently opened in...
Scarborough, Maine.
Scarborough, Maine.
Oh, Eastlime, Connecticut.
I need a new helper.
Yes.
Eastlime, Connecticut. Why am I showing this? This is showing you that the lighting in the parking area is very well-defined, there is no spillover onto adjacent properties, and this is all achieved with 36-foot, 6-inch parking lamp posts. Why do I mention that? Because the ordinance has a maximum height of 25 feet. Why does the ordinance care? I have no idea. I can't imagine why it would be in the ordinance instead of someplace else. But if we go to exhibit, the prior exhibit that you had clicked on, please. It's hard to see from a distance, but you can see the density of light posts in the compliant 25-foot diagram is, if you can inch over there, significantly more dense than what you get with the 36-foot. And so, what do we end up with? We end up with 40 poles instead of 89. That's a big difference in terms of the number of obstacles that are physically in the parking field, and the costs of materials and construction, and powering all of the light fixtures, and then going out periodically and figuring out why they don't work and maintaining them. And so, it is significant gain for very little burden, and that's really our hardship. Costco operates these sites all over the place, and their experience has been that the taller poles can illuminate the lot very safely without spillover lighting, and provide fewer obstructions in the drive aisles and the parking areas, and the ordinance says you can't do it. Don't ask me why. I think it's quite reasonable to have fewer but taller fixtures that have the cutoff features, and of course, I'll just remind the board that a lighting plan and analysis would be part of the site plan that would follow if we could get there. That the planning board is very accustomed to lighting plans and evaluation of photometrics, and whether or not there is spillover light impacting other properties. Substantial justice, spirit of the intent of the ordinance, again, we're in a Performance District where the key is to try and allow flexibility. This is a flexibility factor that we ask that you consider. Value of surrounding properties, I would wholeheartedly agree that there'd be a serious concern if that other, David, I don't know if you still have that, the nighttime one? Yep. I would wholeheartedly agree if the fellow next door was illuminated by our parking lights, but you can't even tell what's there, because the light is so well-contained. And there, yes. Right, and Doug reminds me, and I do have a photo of this later when we're talking about parking, the existing light posts at the mall, in case anyone was wondering, are 40-plus feet. And I don't know that anyone has determined them to be horrible either. The rest of the mall's horrible, but the light posts probably not. Design standards for the loading spaces, this one also should have a folder.
Loading dock?
Yeah, let's go with that. Yep, there it is. So this one actually is from Scarborough. It shows four bays instead of what we're proposing, which is six, but the dimensions are the same. We are asking for 12-foot-wide loading spaces. The ordinance says they have to be 14. Why does the ordinance say that? I have no idea. But we can show you, based on this graphic, that the width of 12 feet works just great for Costco, wherever it goes, and they don't need to build a bigger loading dock than what is necessary to serve these bays, in our case, six. The good news here is that the loading bay aprons on the sides actually get you to a fully compliant width. However, if you were to measure each stall, we need zoning relief, because they are less than 14 feet per. You add the sides, you get to the right number. Without the sides, you need a variance. The hardship, honestly, it's why does anyone really care about this? It's also that Costco knows itself best, and that the ordinance is creating a hardship for, that may make sense in other circumstances, but applied to this use on this property, it really does not serve any purpose. It just requires an unnecessary amount of more. The variance would recognize that the loading dock has, again, the overall required width, but that we're slicing each bay more narrowly. Costco operates hundreds of these sites, they know their trucks, there's one, they know their width, they know their drivers, they know what's physically capable, they would have to go to the planning board with turning diagrams, truck-turning diagrams, to show that this is all safe and feasible, and your variance would simply allow them to get to the next point in the trail. Public interest, spirit and intent, it's all the same here for these items. It's the district, the performance nature of the district allows for flexibility, encourages flexibility, this is the kind of flexibility we're looking for to do a serious redevelopment of this property. And I don't think any abutter is going to appreciably notice the width of the loading docks. It would be the same number of bays, the same number of trucks, the same volume in and out, whether it was wider or narrower. Onto the last item of the first application, screening of the refuse containers. I think we have a view of the compactor exhibit right there. Yeah, so that is the compactor that Costco uses and proposes at this site. It's completely self-contained. When the truck comes to empty the trash, it doesn't empty the trash. It picks up the whole thing, puts it on the back of a truck, and drives away with it. And so there isn't papers flying all over the place, there's not a flap on a dumpster that's left open and is unsightly. It all goes in from inside the store and gets pushed to the back of this until it's full, and then it gets picked up. So as you see, it's not unsightly to look at. It doesn't have odor, in the sense that it's totally self-contained, and it doesn't have, you know, papers blowing all over the place, because somebody left the door open. And so the request here is to not have screening on three sides. The building is actually one side, so we'd request not have screening on two sides, if you will, and to leave it exposed the way it's shown in this photo. I have a photo of it on a truck, if anyone wants to see it. It's in that, it's kind of cool, actually, there it is. It just gets picked up and dragged away.
So what, they bring in, they bring in a new one?
They bring in a new one.
Same.
I don't know if it's on the same truck or not, probably on the same truck.
Does this ever truck come, they come pick it up, and then another truck comes?
There you go, two different trucks, one in, one out. Again, you know, I think, you know, the hardship here is frankly that we're being asked to do something that we don't need. In this case, there is a unique trash disposal system for these businesses, they don't use dumpsters, if they used dumpsters, I don't think we'd have dared to ask, but this is a different animal, with a different appearance, with a different loading and unloading and driveway mechanism. It's just different than what I think the ordinance is envisioning, and what most sites would have. It's a reasonable use, of course, because it's self-contained, and, you know, again, this is the type of flexibility that the Performance Districts are all about. I don't think anyone's going to challenge the property value from, oh, it disappeared, but I don't think anyone's going to take too much issue with a completely self-contained trash compactor, and I certainly don't think they would prefer a dumpster. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd switch to the parking.
You bet.
Then...
Well, maybe I should stop and see, in the interim, are there any questions, or do we want to hold the questions till the end?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Fire away.
Thank you. The same folks are with me for this application. I won't do reintroductions unless you feel you need it for your record.
No, I think we're good to go.
Okay. This is now the re-packaged parking request that we had withdrawn at our previous visit. And for this one, David, it might, it might make sense, there's a file in here that I loaded today. Could you go back to that Onyx folder, where you were? Yeah, this one, right. Oh, I'm sorry, let me just go up to the screen so I can read what I'm looking at. This guy here, please.
I'm looking right screen, I can't see your finger one down, thank you.
Right there, thank you. I know, we're all looking at different things, thank you. So this is microscopic, and I apologize for that, but I can't save my eyes, but I can save yours, I have handouts. If I could, I'll send these around. Thank you so much. Two piles, two sheets. The parking requests were previously withdrawn to allow a clearer presentation of our request. I am hopeful that we will achieve that tonight. This relates to, there are two forms of relief that we've applied for. One is just straight-up parking variances. The ordinance requires X, and we're asking permission to provide Y. Secondly, there is already a section of the ordinance that allows the planning board to consider alternative parking arrangements, and specifically, the building of fewer parking spaces to support the program of uses that are proposed. And you might say, well, if that's already in there, why are you asking us to do anything? The answer is because it comes with a catch. And the catch is, the planning board can approve a lesser number of spaces, but they have to require that you show the area where you would build all of those spaces if it was proven at a later time to be an issue. And if that's not bad enough, the zoning administrator, no offense, gets to decide when and if that reality occurs. So not workable, really, on any level. Setting aside an area for parking you've demonstrated you don't need, and then putting the controls in the hands of a third party who is not the applicant, the lender, the developer, if it's different, and so forth. So we're here asking for two things, and they're really alternative forms of relief. One is the set of specific parking variances. Ordinance says X, we're providing Y, we hope to justify that request to you. The second is, alternatively, if you don't feel that those variances will work for all of what we're asking, you could punt to the second scenario and relieve us of having to show that the extra parking the planning board does not find we need to build is unnecessary, and doesn't have to be shown, and we don't have this trigger point hanging over our heads in perpetuity, that someday the zoning administrator, whoever that turns out to be, would require the construction.
So if I could interrupt you there.
Yes.
This is something that's been puzzling me since your first presentation. If we are to grant your request for fewer parking spaces than the ordinance calls for, period, we just grant that, there's no need for us to be saying anything to the planning board, is there?
That's correct. These are alternative forms of relief, because I could not, of course, know whether we would persuade you to grant the parking variances.
Okay.
I needed to cover it both ways. And it was mentioned in the original application, but it wasn't spelled out as clearly as I have now.
It was, it's, I won't go into it now, but it strikes me as, from my limited understanding of the ordinance, a potential legal problem, the second one, but there's no need to discuss it if we, depending on how we rule on the first, maybe utterly moot.
Totally agree. And for what it's worth, I did discuss it with staff, I think it was Tracy, not David, we did work on this concept. It, again, it's horrible to put words in the mouth of somebody who doesn't work here any longer, but we did land on this as an alternative form of relief.
Okay, well, perhaps I could be educated later, if necessary. If not, I can proceed, and I have blissfully heard.
And I will do the same. So consequently, we're asking for variances from the table of Office Street parking requirements, and if you go to the map that I marked up with magic marker and handed around, you will see 40 slash 40 dash 1. That is the lot that we're proposing, the JCPenney be paired with the Costco. It's this grouping right here on the screen, if you will, but same as what you've got. Right there, we're asking for a variance to allow 1,020 parking spaces, where the ordinance would require 1,124. A hundred lot difference. Just to give you all the statistics, 40 dash 2, the multi-use lot, this one is going to have the two multifamily buildings, the R2 building has some retail space as well... The R2 building has some retail space as well. The two retail outbuildings, which are down here, which I haven't spent a lot of time talking about, but they're part of the proposed condition. The existing trampoline park, more on that one in a minute. And the Health Club, we're asking for a variance to allow 1,019 parking spaces where 2,055 are otherwise required. I know that sounds big, but we'll get to the trampoline park, and you will understand what I mean shortly. For the Applebee's restaurant right here, again, our mission is to make this lot stand on its own and to disassociate the condominium. For that one, we're asking for a variance to recognize 56 parking spaces where 68 would otherwise be required. The 56 spaces are what they have now, existing condition.
Ari, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah?
Just trying to... You're... Forty and 41 are Costco, J.C. Penney, right?
Yes.
That's... That's the one you're asking...
The numbers changed, Ari, from the original agenda. That's what I think they're getting focused on.
Okay. They did change. They're less than what the agenda indicates. So we noticed more. We noticed a bigger variance than we're asking for.
Repeat the number then. What was the number you want for...
I'm sorry. Repeat them. Yeah, sure.
For 40-41?
Yep. We're asking for permission to provide 1,020 spaces where 1,124 would be required. And if I could, take a look at the other handout. Right. We've got little red balloons around that revision. It's right here, if that helps.
Yeah, 1,020.
Yep, is provided. The requirement is 1,124.
But... Unless I'm looking at an old agenda, the agenda I have says for lots 40 and 41, 943 spaces where 1,131 are required.
We've increased parking.
Oh, okay. Got you. Okay. Right on.
We're providing more.
Oh, and the calculation for what's required slightly changed.
Everything's gotten better.
Okay.
I guess that's my point.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
That makes any sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, no problem. Stop me anytime. So we did lot the J.C. Penney Costco, we did the mixed use, and we did the restaurant. The rest of our parking complies. The cinema lot, which we haven't talked much about because we're not here for variances for that lot, but that should comply. This lot up here, the waterfront lot, if you will, for lack of a better name, complies. And let's talk about why that lot complies. The developer, since the last meeting, since the repackaging of the application, made the determination to place underbuilding parking in all three of these multifamily buildings. That is a big reason why the numbers are lesser or lower, or the variance is smaller. That comes at great expense. That presents other engineering challenges, but we think that it is all to the good to show the board that we're working very hard to try and ask for the minimum relief necessary to make the program work. Yes, sir.
So there was not underground when you came in January, and now there is?
That is correct. For all three buildings, there was none before.
Is it enough that the tenants are going to have like a dedicated spot for each tenant, or is it just first come, first served?
There will not be enough for every unit to have a space, but there is a significant number, and I think I've got it on this chart here, if I can find it. But yeah, in building R1, which is the big one, 176 underground spaces. In R2, this one here, 82 spaces. And in this R3, 100 spaces up here. A significant amount of under-story parking, which, you know, we'll charge rent for, but nonetheless will be a wonderful amenity.
Yep.
In our New England climate.
Yeah, definitely.
What is our hardship for all of this? Well, again, given the encouragement of mixed use in this performance district and the compatibility of the uses that we're proposing here, for example, somebody that lives in this building, visits this gym, takes their kids to the trampoline park, goes to dinner over here, maybe visits a retailer here for whatever is in here, smaller retail shops, they probably have not moved their car once. And that's a big shared parking benefit and exactly what the ordinance has in mind when it talks conceptually about alternative forms of parking analysis and building fewer spaces. You don't have to take my word for it, and you wouldn't. The applicant went out and got an analysis from Vanessen Associates. David, that's in the...
Yep, it was distributed to them.
You may already have it, and you couldn't read it from there anyway, but...
Yep.
That was prepared with reliance upon the ULI Institute Parking Manual. Those of you familiar with these things would know that that's the gold standard for these things. Believe it, don't believe it, but it exists. And I think you do have it. That memo concludes... I'll save you all the details, and I'm not a parking engineer, but they are. And the memo concludes that all peak and non-peak demand from this development would be satisfied with the parking that is proposed in what I've shown you here and what is outlined here in the red balloon calculation table.
Does that look at as a trampoline park?
I'm sorry?
I don't have it in front of me. Does that look at as a trampoline park?
It does.
So what happens?
What happens? Why?
The trampoline park becomes something else.
Well, let's do that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The proposed lot 40-2, the mixed-use lot, the calculation and classification for a trampoline park was as a commercial indoor recreational facility.
Yep.
That could be anything, including an indoor stadium. And in other words, it's not...
A casino.
Right. I mean, there are any number of uses that would fit in that category that are parked far more heavily than an indoor trampoline park.
Okay.
And that area is actually 35,000 square feet, and the ordinance requires one space per 50 square feet. And so you might be doing the math in your head. I will save you the trouble. 703 parking spaces are required by ordinance for the trampoline park. Now, I don't know how many of you folks go there. Sadly, I do. And I... Again, this has been hanging around for a long time, but I was there for my son to attend a birthday party at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, January 20th of 2024. It was the coldest day of the year. It was primary weekend. It was the coldest day of the year, and it was too cold for skiing. So you would think that if you were into the trampoline park, that was your day, that was your weather, that was your time to do something peak indoors. And David, if you could go back to the folder, there is a photo in here right there.
Second down. Thank you.
There it is. I stood on the top of my car, and I took that photograph, and that was it. Notice the height of the light post? But that... At least 40 feet. But that was it.
Now, can we get the photo of you standing on top of your car?
I couldn't take a selfie without falling off. So anyway, this is all anecdotal. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I will tell you that there were no wheres near 703 cars parked there. And what we've done for the purposes of this calculation is we've plugged in 81 spaces. Not 50.
And the users, they only need 50.
And this just in, my assistant, the user, the altitude trampoline park that's there today, will be there tomorrow. They said they need...
50.
50. I don't know. What I do know is that there weren't more than 50 on the coldest day that I was there. And even if they need 50, we've programmed 81.
Right.
Similar issue for the fitness center. Not quite as... Oh, sorry.
Did you say ULI requires 700, or Concord requires 700?
The Concord zoning ordinance requires... That's why the variance looks so big.
Right.
Because we need something between 50 and 80 spaces, but the ordinance says, give me 700. 700 spaces. I can't even imagine what that would look like there. And this is why I say, if we show up at the planning board, if we don't get this variance, and we show up at the planning board, and the planning board says, yeah, I get it, you can build fewer than 700, unless I get a variance from the alternative, I'm still going to have to show where I can build the other 600 and something spaces, which is really not much better than not getting any relief at all.
Right. Because their view in a stadium seems like it would be closer to like a gym.
There... This was the co-administration, not...
If I can offer, city staff understands that our parking ordinance criteria is outdated. We are looking, again, you've heard us talking about it. What I could present in the little work we did with Concord Next, which is not going forward, but those parking standards that were going to be proposed, this would have been okay.
And if it's going to be changed to anything, it would probably be changed to retail, which has significantly less required parking.
It would at least be something that recognizes the type of demand that's coming in there and not be a stadium.
Yep.
Fitness Center, similar issue. The Concord standard for fitness is one space per 120 square feet. Based on the size of that, of the location, we've got planned here 292 spaces. And again, you know, this is wildly beyond what that user can reasonably anticipate even at peak times. Keep in mind, not everybody comes to the gym at one time. It's not the total number of members. It's how many would be there driving a vehicle at peak time. Again, you'd have some capture from those who live here. Again, you'd have some capture from those who might use public transportation to the extent that it exists, and you would end up with a far lighter load. We have budgeted 88 spaces for that facility, whereas 292 is required by the ordinance. Again, what sounded huge at the beginning, we're quickly taking big bites of. And so, you know, again, VAI took a look at this against the ULI parking standards. They determined that our peak periods were in December. For the residential, it was December weekday evenings, and for the retail and commercial, it was December weekend afternoons. Exactly what you would anticipate. Why is this variance reasonable? Well, requiring us to overpark dramatically is a direct attack on the development program. We simply can't do both in the same place. And overparking, whether we're excused from building it now and having it hang over our heads later, or whether we build it all now, it is inefficient, it is wasteful, and it is really inconsistent with the desire to redevelop properties that really need it and are, of course, in a performance district where it's intended. Same for spirit and intent of the ordinance, substantial justice. I think the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and if you factor in this whole concept of building fewer spaces, right-sizing your parking, I think where you land with that is that the spirit and intent of the ordinance is to have you have enough, not have you have too much. It would make no sense that the ordinance is intending to have you overdo it. And again, our analysis did consider peak times. Value of surrounding properties? I mean, it's as simple as this. If everything that needs to be there can fit, then there's no impact on surrounding properties. Just a couple of minutes on this alternative parking arrangement. I know the chairman doesn't like it, but that's okay. I won't take personally...
Am I making that face?
You are. But that's all right, and you're entitled. The biggest problem we have with this is that we don't know how to handle it. If we had to show that amount of parking, all 700 trampoline spaces, and then said to the city administration or the zoning administrator, you figure out whether or not we need it someday, any particular day. I don't know how you could ever plan for that. I don't know what the planning board would do with it. To my knowledge, nobody has, you know, done that with maybe the exception of a very small amount of parking. But the kind of numbers we're talking about here would be completely unmanageable, unfinanceable. No lender would say, hey, I get it. You may or may not have to build 1,000 more parking spaces. I'll build that into pro forma. Here's your check. Not going to happen. And so we're asking for this because the hardship is basically being asked to do something that doesn't make any sense, especially if you can show that you don't need it all, that you can satisfy the planning board that you don't need it all. Why would you build it or stand to build it if it was deemed to be unnecessary? Is it a reasonable use? You know, I think it is. Or is it reasonable to be excused from this? I think it is. I think that the variance would allow this type of redevelopment with an appropriate number of parking spaces, not whatever the ordinance thought was inappropriate, but both years or decades in the past, so times change, but also without the benefit of a shared parking analysis, without the benefit of the Concord Next concept. I get that it's never been approved anywhere, and as is pointed out by staff, may be off the rails permanently. Guess what that draft does with this requirement? It says to the planning board that you can, quote, "find that a lower number of parking spaces will sufficiently accommodate the parking needs of the principal use," end quote. Guess what it doesn't do? It doesn't say, show the extra number of spaces someplace and give somebody else the ability to control whether or not you have to build it. So if that got adopted, I might be all set, but it hasn't been, and you all know that. I don't know whether it will or not.
On the... On your map here, you said you're... For 40-2, it says you're providing 1,019 spaces. But then in the parking study, it says that sub parcel B, which I think matches up to that same section, is providing 1,277 spaces. Now, it's still more than what the study says you need, but...
Right.
Can you explain that?
The difference is if you look at the chart in the study for the shared parking, it includes the Northern Third Building, which on its own is fully compliant.
Oh, they're including...
They analyzed the whole eastern portion of the site. Now, the other thing, too, is the eastern portion of the site...
I see. Okay.
In our application, we're providing 30% more than peak. So we're not just meeting peak demand, we're providing 30% more.
For that section, the eastern section. Is there going to be a crosswalks on these streets?
Yeah.
They'll have sidewalks.
There.
Oh, that's a crosswalk. Okay.
I mean, it's going to jump around as we go through planning, but yes, 100% pedestrian consideration. So that's basically it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're asking for typical parking variances. We're also asking separately for this alternative form of relief if you don't like our proposal on traditional parking variances. And it's not because we don't think you'll do one or the other, it's because we're trying to cover both potential avenues and still have a package that could be accepted by the planning board as complete. That's the mission.
Very good. Any other questions from the board?
If I may...
Sir?
If you could mention when you talk about the bank lot, and I heard you, right, you said the road built by the city for the frontage, that needs to be a city-accepted street, not built by the city.
Yeah, I didn't...
I think you said built to city standards.
Correct. It would be built to a public standard.
As long as I have the floor real quick. City plan did also agree with our ULI as a great standard to use for parking.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
She agreed with VAI. I'm not a parking engineer.
No, the standard they use is ULI.
No. VAI drafted that analysis. That's my only point, yeah.
The standard they use is ULI.
Correct.
She agrees with that standard.
We got a ULI and a VAI.
Okay.
I'll get out of here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? I hear you see a hand. Mr. Schreiker, please come forward. Swear to tell the truth, Anne, nothing but...
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you.
You bet. What's the question?
And that is, I'm in favor of some of these variances and not others. So should I only talk about the ones I'm in favor of?
No, you can talk about all of them.
Okay. My name is Roy Schreiker. I live in Concord. And I think this is a much better explanation of the whole thing than last time. I think it was worth the wait. I have...my real problem with the whole thing is I don't see the hardship. They bought this huge lot for eighteen million, and that comes out to if there was no buildings on it, they're only paying three hundred and sixty thousand on an acre. And my lot, on a substandard street in the middle of nowhere with no snow plowing, I'm paying on an assessed value of eight hundred and eighteen thousand acres. I'm paying a price of, you know, two and a half times as much for this lot. So I don't think it's a hardship. Their real problem is they're stuffing too much stuff on the lot, and they wouldn't need these variances so much if they went back to how much this lot would truly support. So anyway, that's the background. So I'll start with the things I agree with. The tire center, yes. I remember the tires. Sears used to be a tire center. And sure, every now and then, if it was hot, they'd leave the doors open, and maybe in the parking lot, you could hear some clinking around, but it's not a big thing. And I think that overall, this is, you know, not unreasonable. I will point out Walmart does not do tires. You've got to go to Tilt 'em or Hook 'em if you want Walmart tires. As far as the bank lot, well, you know, sure, why not? They seem to have enough stuff. The wider driveways, well, yeah, why not? Why do we have a maximum width of a driveway anyway? And that seems reasonable. A narrower loading dock, I don't think that's going to affect the public or the abutment. It's only going to affect if the trucks start backing into each other, and that's their problem and not ours. As far as the dumpster, well, I don't know. I didn't read the ordinance. It doesn't speak about dumpsters or trash stuff or whatever. And the only thing is, if you grant this relief, does that mean if they got rid of these high-tech things and go back to a dumpster, they don't need the shielding? So you might want to condition that, that this is only true as long as you use these things and not a dumpster. When I was in college, I worked as a janitor, and I used a trash compactor. And let's just say that you could still get a smell from a trash compactor, that stuff is still in there. You could still have stuff blowing around if you were careless when you put it in. So it's not like a trash compactor is a perfect solution to everything, but it's better than dumpster. You might want to condition that this screening only applies...a lack of screening only applies so long as they do not have a dumpster. As far as the lamp posts, well, you know, I really feel like if it's in the ordinance, you know, they should have to prove to you why they can get by with the higher ones and not wait for the planning board. Why is it in the ordinance and not as a condition in the planning board if it's something? The reasons why you have a light ordinance is, number one, you know, they spill over to adjoining properties. Number two, the whole lighting, there was a thing in the monitor lately about the birds, you know, flying over and getting lost in too much lighting. So I think that perhaps we need to have something, you know, about the lamp posts, that you've got to meet whatever requirements. And as far as the lot coverage, well, sure, it sounds good, but once again, for some reason, you cannot email the planning board members directly. All you can do is send them to the people there, and I don't know if they ever forward them. But you had a thing about the permeable pavement, where I thought an engineer gave you the wrong answer, and I sent a thing from UNH. The permeable pavement is not supposed to go into under drains. It's supposed to go directly down into the ground. You dig enough stone, so it doesn't. And so I think, you know, maybe you people ought to think about as a general rule, okay, if you want to put down more pavement, anything over eighty-five percent is permeable. So it goes right down and doesn't wind up in the drainage somewhere. And the last thing, of course, is the one that's going to throw me, and that's the height relief. I really feel like the problem is they're trying to stuff too much on this lot. Giving them the height relief is nothing. You're saying it's okay to stuff too much on the lot. So I think that you need to say, "No, go to the rules like everybody else, and just don't put so much here." They got this land at a bargain price, like I explained. It's not really a hardship, so don't give them that relief. As far as the parking, I'm confused about something. It says in the thing that this is a request to reopen public testimony on oh-one-four-two-two-oh-two-four. As far as I know, you never had public testimony on that.
We didn't, but that's...we chose to hear the case.
Okay, but it's not a request to open public testimony. It's new public testimony.
Yes, it is.
But the worst thing is, when I asked these zoning people about it, they said it was in the minutes that you had already had the public testimony.
We did...when it first came to us, it was all one case. And in the course of the discussions on the case, the appellant asked if they could withdraw two portions, which were the parking-related ones, from the original proposal, which they did. And then they came back with a newly noticed new case, which was just parking. It actually was a month or two ago that that case was filed, I think, but it is a separate case.
Yes, I remember that. But what I'm saying is, you never had a hearing on the parking because they asked not to consider it in the original hearing.
Right.
So in fact, this was not a request to reopen oh-one-four-two-two-oh-two-four.
Nope.
It is initial public testimony.
Nope. And is that significant in some way?
Well, only in that this is supposed to be a legal process, and I think we should, you know, get things right. Okay.
Oh, boy, now we have to start over.
But just for the record, everyone in the public is able to comment on this.
Okay.
Right. So go ahead.
You know, when somebody tells me it's in the minutes that we had testimony on that, and I couldn't find it, I consider that a mistake.
No, that was a misunderstanding, I think. Yep.
Okay. Anyway, so we get to the parking. You know, most of these I can sort of agree with. The problem I have with Costco is they have stores all over the country. And I don't know if you've, you know, seen stores around in Concord, but usually, they do not haul the snow away. They build these huge mounds of snow in the middle of their parking lot, and they have a giant loader that takes up four spaces to move the snow around. So there's less space in a parking lot in a Costco in New Hampshire than there would be, say, in Florida. So maybe they need more spaces in Concord, and I think this is the sort of thing that you should start asking these people about, is, you know, have you really accounted for this in allowing more spaces in places where there's snow? Are you really going to pay to haul that snow away somewhere? Because maybe they say they will, maybe they say they won't. Who knows? But I think that, you know, you can't just say, "Other Costcos only need this many spaces" if you're not asking where they are. And the last one, of course, is with the health club and the trampoline park. And once again, I really feel like in this case, the problem is, what happens when the trampoline park goes out of business and somebody says, "I want to put a casino there"? That's also a, you know, indoor recreational facility. And they say its grandfathered as an indoor recreational facility. We don't need to add any more parking. So I think that's the real issue, and that's why I would say for that particular thing, tell them they've got to provide a space for it. So if somebody comes in and says, "Our casino was grandfathered, we don't need to add any more parking," you say, "Yes, you do, under the fact that you have the space, you have to build it." And so if somebody keeps the trampoline park, they never have to build it. But if somebody wants to change it to a far more intensive use, they can't say, "Oh, no, it's grandfathered." They've got to be able to build the parking that they have the space for. So that's...they're not going to like it, but they're trying to put too much on this lot, and the answer is that they only put on this lot the amount of stuff that really fit. It wouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
My name is Alan Herschlag. I live here in Concord. I'm not here so much to speak for or against it, but just to bring up a number of concerns that I have regarding some of the testimony and some of the requests or some of the variances. So it was noted by Mr. Pollack that this is being presented as a complete redevelopment of the mall property, and I would object to that characterization. I think the phase two of Concord Next proposed zoning is an example of complete redevelopment, of a complete redevelopment project. I believe that this project is a...removes parking spaces and then just adds buildings. A complete redevelopment would be more along the lines of something like you'd see at Tuscan Village, and whether or not I think that would be an appropriate development for Concord is an entirely different story. I also would like to bring up the issue. In section eight, I believe it is, on page four, number eight, they bring up about reducing the parking, the number of parking spaces, and how that's mentioned in Concord Next from July 2022. And if you look at phase two of the potential future of specific areas around Concord from Concord Next from August of 2022, and they have a very specific proposal for how the mall would be redeveloped. But either one of those issues should be considered or germane because the city has abandoned any references to form-based code or Concord Next after spending six years and two hundred thousand dollars on a consultant. It no longer exists in...on the city website or on any city records that I'm aware of. So I would hope that that wouldn't be a consideration while you're reviewing whether or not to grant variances. And I think when looking for relief for redevelopment of underperforming districts, it shouldn't overshadow other codes that protect the public and add to the livability and aesthetics of our community. And we look at the spirit of the ordinances requiring screening for a trash compactor and utilities or building mechanics is designed to enhance the flexibility of the district, not to limit its flexibility. So I'd strongly encourage you not to grant relief for shielding the compactor because it's a mechanical building unit. Recently, I was in Portsmouth, and they have a new development there called the Brick Market on Penn Hill Street. And on the side area, they have some tables and a fountain, and they have a couple of utilities there. And one of the utilities is block which...what looks like an oversized nineteen-fifties-type hood from a car, sort of like Art Deco. And the other utilities in the alleyway are blocked by a pretty funky sculpture. I don't see why there's any reason, certainly when it would interfere with the ability to remove and replace the compactor, why that shouldn't be shielded from the public. While it might not be unattractive, it certainly doesn't enhance the aesthetics of that area. I think, other than that... I guess I could throw in my few cents about lighting. My druthers would be to see much shorter light poles. I don't know if you grant the variance, if that would lock in the planning board to require them to be able to give that thirty-six feet, six foot, six inch limitation, or if that would still allow the planning board to have some flexibility in looking at what makes the most sense for light pollution and how that would best. While it may not have a skow over effect because of where it's located, it certainly has...have a large glowing impact as you drive by or fly over the area. So thank you very much for this opportunity to present my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Swear to tell the truth, nothing but... Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
Yes, I'm Gail Page.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Page?
Well, I have only a couple of comments to make. I would wait till everyone's really...mainly, in my observations around Concord, it seems to me that the commercial areas in Concord are surrounded by excess and unused parking. So I'm actually here to speak in favor of reducing the parking that our zoning ordinances The...I'm actually talking about that because of my concern for the effects of global warming, that the asphalt and the solid cover of the ground is adding to the global warming, adding to the temperature here right in Concord. And if we can find ways to reduce that coverage, I think that would be advantageous to everyone. I realize that in this instance, we're replacing parking spaces with buildings, which I'm not sure is going to change much, but it might if the roofing of the buildings is adapted for this issue. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor, please? I think we already heard you.
I choose to like the guy you said.
You only get one bite at the apple, Alan.
It's one over here.
Swear to tell the truth, nothing but...
I swear.
Anne, may we have your name, please?
Helen Bryan.
What would you like us to know?
I am very much in favor of this whole development. I know some people have voiced a concern that too much is trying to be fit onto this plot of land. I think that's really arbitrary. A lot of relief is related to all these codes that I don't understand why they are the way that they are. I doubt anyone in the audience that does. Maybe I shouldn't say that. But the point being, just because something requires relief doesn't mean that too much is trying to be put on to a given space. I think mixed use makes a lot of sense. And probably the biggest reason I'm in favor of the project as a whole and also granting relief is that if I were to look at Steeplegate right now and then try and envision a forty-five-foot apartment building compared to a sixty-foot apartment building, I probably wouldn't notice a difference. If I had to picture eleven hundred parking spaces versus nine hundred parking spaces, I probably wouldn't notice a difference. But in totality, if I had to compare the eyesore that is Steeplegate Mall compared to, you know, apartments and stores that people are actually using, and that difference would be very noticeable. And my concern is that if you weren't willing to work with developers and businesses, then in this case, you'd kind of let perfect be the enemy of good. And perfect in this case is just what I find to be kind of arbitrary codes that, you know, I don't know why I like it. It can only be twenty-eight feet high, but it wouldn't matter to me if it's thirty-six. Probably wouldn't matter if it was fifty-six because me personally, I just really don't care. And so I think in these instances, it makes a lot of sense to have a little bit of flexibility because, you know, when I go to Target or Best Buy, every time I drive by Steeplegate, it's wildly depressing, and I would like to see something else there, especially if it means more housing in Concord.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Please come forward. Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Laura Gandia. I'm an attorney with Divine Millamette in Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm here on behalf of Silva Holdings, the owner of 277 Sheep Davis Road where the TD Bank is located. And we are here in opposition. And I do have a packet of material, can I?
Sure. Do you have a copy that you might give, Mr. Pollak?
So once again, Laura Gandia, I'm here on behalf of Silva Holdings LLC, the owner of Unit Three in the Steepleme, Steeplegate Condominium Association. So this condominium association has three units. One consists of the Unit Two, the Steeplegate Mall. Unit Three is the bank and Unit One is Applebee's. And just by way of background, I'm not asking the board to weigh in on anything, but I just think it's important for them to understand just a little bit of the terms of the condominium documents. The condominium documents require for termination unanimous consent. That has not been given. And the condominium documents also do not allow for certain uses. And a certain use that is not allowed via the condominium documents is a residential use. And the first thing I want to just put out right away is the variance request for the advantage for my client's lot, which is the bank. My client did not sign the application to allow this variance application to move forward. They did not assent to this variance application moving forward. It's my understanding that your application requirements require that the owner sign the application. They did not do that. So with that, I do not believe that the board has jurisdiction to hear this application as that application is not complete. And we would ask that the board not entertain that particular application, not deny it, because if my client was to ever come back with anything different, to rule that it does not have, one, just rule that the application is not complete or that it does not have jurisdiction over the application because it is not complete. Again, my client is the owner. They did not consent to the filing of this application for a variance and it's not prudent or proper for this board to consider hearing that application. With that, I'd like to go through just some points to consider and that's on page two of my document. Just to kind of give the layout of the town's planning perspective for this area, what documents come into play when you're thinking of long-range planning for the city of Concord. Again, we have a lot of variance requests, so we're asking that they not be viewed in isolation per se, but, but part of the overall development scheme of the project. The variance request affect the design and the appearance of the project and the requests are significant. So the zoning for this project is the Gateway Performance District and I put the little zoning map in there for you. The Gateway Performance District is established to provide for well-designed, large-scale commercial development along arterial streets at entrances to the city. Permitted uses will be predominantly commercial and may include both individual and mixed-use developments of retail, restaurant, service, and office uses. Fully serviced by municipal utilities, the uses developed within this district are expected to adhere, and this is very important, to high standards for appearance in order to ensure that the gateways for the city are attractive and functional. Buffering and screening for adjacent neighborhoods are of concern for this development at the edges of this district. We have the gateway to the city from Exit Three and we also have Loudon Road, which is a major arterial roadway in the town. The town also has part of its planning documents, the 2020 Vision for Concord, New Hampshire, City of Villages Concord Master Plan. And again, it talks about reducing capacity on Loudon Road, give Loudon Road a village identity, create a pedestrian-friendly Loudon Road with streets and pedestrian crossings, redirect traffic to I-393 for mall and big box access, provide a new community center linked to the school, and concentrate new development in the mall retail area to accommodate retail demand. And that's from your 2020 Vision for Concord Master Plan. Then there's a Master Plan 2030. Again, corridors designed to discourage through vehicular traffic. And again, it talks about Loudon Road again, that it operates poorly with substantial congestion, so there are concerns about traffic in this area. And it also talks about pedestrian bicycle streetscapes and improvements to that area. And the town does have the pedestrian master plan of 2017 that I included as well for some guidance, again, talks about on the Loudon Road and the concern with traffic going from there all the way down to the end. So we do have this property that's owned Gateway Performance and I did review your zoning ordinance in detail and there is a lot of going back and forth given that this particular property is Gateway Performance. So there's a lot of back and forth that I need, that I believe needed to be done in some areas. I don't think it was done. So I'll start with the request for parking. So I know when Attorney Pollak was up here, he indicated that you have an alternative way of looking at parking. One, that's just to say that you don't have, that the project does not have to meet the parking requirements for the off-street table and that is good to go. But if that's not the case, then you have the conditional use process through the planning board. I disagree. I believe that there's also another portion of the town zoning, which is Section 28-7-12, that talks about the performance standards and that's Section B. And that states, and this is on page seven, the parking requirements of Section 28-7-2D, table of off-street parking requirements of this ordinance must, not anything else, must be met for all uses in the Gateway Performance District. And that's what we have here. And then that section of your ordinance goes on that says, required parking spaces may be provided through options available pursuant to Section 28-7-11, alternative parking arrangements of this ordinance. So you have in several areas, the, one, for this particular district, the city wants you to meet the required parking space. In fact, it says must for the Gateway Performance. And then if you can't do that, then you are to go to the alternative parking arrangements of Section 28-7-11. And I know there was testimony given, but we don't like the calculations. Some of the calculations are old, they're outdated. I understand that, but that is a very dangerous analysis for this board to engage in. If every time we heard an applicant come before us and say, well, we don't like that particular section of the city zoning ordinance, we don't like this, and you agreed and then you engage in analysis to grant a variance just because you don't like it, that's dangerous. There's a proper mechanism to change the city zoning ordinance and that exists and that hasn't been utilized. So the board has in front of it what those parking requirements are and they have the five criteria that they need to use to analyze each request that becomes before it.
So wait, sorry to interrupt. Are you, so are you saying that your view is that we, that must language means we don't have the authority to grant a variance at all as to the parking?
I'm saying, oh, you don't, it says must. I mean, you could use a similar analysis to what I believe the first case was when you talked about special exceptions and waiving that. So you do have must. I'm not going to, you know, that could be something that you talk to your town attorney because I think, I'll say one thing and I'm sure Ari would say something different.
But that's your position?
My position is that you have a must language and then you, that defaults to the conditional use permit criteria for the planning board. But I will go through, just in case the board disagrees with me or they have an attorney that has a different opinion. You do have the first request from Section 28-7-2E that talks about, again, the request for the different relief. There's a difference that the applicant has requested of 1,236 spaces. That's a significant difference for parking. So he's requesting that he be relieved from requiring 1,236 spaces. And when we get into the criteria, I'm not going to get into the legalese of the criteria because I'm sure the board is all familiar with the legalese of the criteria. When you talk about not being contrary to the public interest, as this board knows, that's health, safety, character of the neighborhood. A request to have a difference of 1,236 spaces can only be viewed as something that could be a very big safety concern. That's a significant difference in an already heavily traveled area, a congested area, as the town has noted in numerous of its planning documents that I just recited to you folks. And this increase in traffic with not sufficient parking can result in congestion, may increase accidents, and have an overall dysfunction to the adjacent roadways. The second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Again, you're going to look at the health, safety, and welfare. And I already provided to you that Section 28-7-2-D that talks about for the Gateway Performance, the spirit is that you must meet those parking requirements. So that's the spirit. The city's ordinance wants projects in the Gateway business to meet those requirements for the reasons that I already spoke of. And further, Section 28-7-11 is instructive as to the spirit of the ordinance as well. And I know that's a second request. This section provides projected parking demand. The presence of public transportation or other factors indicate that a lower number of parking spaces will, will sufficiently accommodate the parking needs of the principal use. So it's talking about what is needed and the applicant, besides saying that his traffic study has failed to adequately address what factors, if any, would justify its request while keeping the spirit of the ordinance intact. The substantial justice, again, as this board is aware, it's a balancing act between the gain to the public and the loss to the applicant. As the city's planning documents clearly state, there's concerns for traffic in this area. This is a gateway portion of the city. You have traffic coming in from different highways. If you do not have proper parking, that's going to result in backflow onto your major roadways. That should be a concern and that is not anything that would be viewed as a gain to the public. In fact, that would be a loss to the public. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. What I heard from the applicant is that there is no evidence that it's not going to diminish property value, property values. But he didn't provide anything saying that it's not going to diminish property values. There was no information presented to the board from a commercial real estate developer or appraiser saying this project's not going to have any impacts to the surrounding property areas. In fact, my client is one of those surrounding property areas and she believes that this project is going to have a significant negative effect on the value for her property.
Do you have any backup information?
I have just stuff that I don't think, believe requires backup documentation. So her reason is parking. Right now, that's a 51-acre unit, well, space for all of those three different units. There's overflow parking that the bank utilizes for parking. You take her lot out, she does not have that parking.
I'm just, it, it, just thinking this through, so...
Sure.
But wouldn't a project like this bringing so many potential customers to the bank tend to improve the value of the bank's lot because you're, you know, you're bringing a lot of... Because right now with the mall shutting down and there's so, so, you know, fewer businesses there, doesn't that hurt the bank? Because aren't, wouldn't those be a lot of the bank's customers?
If there was a properly designed project that wasn't requiring 10 variances, I might tend to agree with you. But you have a project that's looking for significant reductions in traffic, you know, lighting, aesthetics. So as the bank, or if I'm wanting to be a TD Bank customer, and I know if I'm going to go to this TD Bank on, in this plaza and Costco's there, and it is a nightmare to get in and out of there because there's so much parking, it's congested, it's just a mess, I'm not going to go to TD Bank. I'm going to go someplace different.
You, you, you said that this is overflow parking?
Yes.
Does your client have enough parking to satisfy the ordinance on their property?
According to Attorney Pollak's calculations, he said that they do.
Do they have any contractual right to park anywhere else?
As part of the common area space for the existing condominium, they do.
They do? That's in the documents somewhere?
Yes. And again, the unnecessary hardship, as this board, again, is well-aware, is the uniqueness of the property. I didn't really hear a lot going into what makes the property unique. There was a lot of discussion about the project or the cost or what it looks like now. But the uniqueness of this property is really where the board is supposed to be focused in its analysis, what is unique about it. In fact, even if the board was to say they believe that the property is unique, that uniqueness, if anything, in our opinion, would give credence to that, the fact that there is a fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the zoning ordinances in question that apply to the specific application on that property. In particular, this one. So we have parking. He wants, you know, to reduce that parking by over, you know, 1,200 spaces. There's nothing unique about that property that says that you can't put that parking space in there. You're not able to because you want to put maybe three additional residential buildings there. You want to do something different, you want this and you want that. But the uniqueness of this property does not give way to saying that there's not a fair and substantial relationship. If anything, it does just the opposite. There is a fair and substantial relationship, given the size of this property, to meet the parking demands. You may not be able to meet the parking demands because you want other things on this property to develop your project in a certain way. So that was the first parking request. The second one, that's in front of you, is, has to do with the conditional use permit. And I believe the applicant is asking to be excused from showing that sufficient land area is allocated and shown on the site plan for the number of spaces required. Again, this ordinance requires a certain number of parking spots and then if you can't meet it, this is how the city's ordinance reads, if you can't meet it, then you go to this two, that other section of the zoning that I just spoke to you folks earlier, then you go to the conditional use permit requirement. This is if you don't want to have the required number of spaces that we said, we're saying you must have because you're Gateway Performance, you now have to go to this conditional use permit criteria and you have to reserve sufficient amount of land to show that you'll have the land if it's determined at some point in time that there needs to be more parking spaces. So granting the variance for this request would be contrary to the public interest as it will affect, again, the health, safety, and welfare of the general area. The ordinance requires a certain number of parking spots and then as an alternative, provides for an alternative parking standard to authorize fewer parking spaces so long as there is sufficient land area allocated. This appears to be a safety measure. Criteria number one talks all about safety. That's the spirit of this, that's why you have this. A safety net of some sort for these spaces that may be needed in the future for this alternative parking arrangement that, again, is asking for a significant reduction in the number of spots being sought. The spirit of the ordinance for this particular one, again, it goes back to the, the spirit and intent. The intent is to allow fewer parking spaces if, and this is where your spirit comes in, and the intent, if there is sufficient land area allocated for this. And that spirit is clearly identified in Section 28-7-12 of your Performance Standard B that I already read to the board. And a lot of the similar arguments that you have in front of you is the same for the first request for parking. Again, the spirit calls for the parking requirements to be met, allows for alternative parking arrangements. The applicant is seeking relief from the parking calculations and then wants to seek an alternative arrangement. Then wants to be relieved from alternative parking arrangements for the land being allocated. So basically, the way I look at it, he's asking for a double whammy when it comes to parking. He's asking in, one, no, don't tell me that I have to have the number of spots that I have. That's the first thing. And then give me relief from the, the parking area. So it's not just one thing he's asking for for parking, he's asking for two. And both of those requests, if you look at it the way your zoning is... And both of those requests, if you look at it the way your zoning is written, both clearly go against the spirit and intent, affect the safety, are against the public interest, could create traffic congestion and havoc on your arterial roadways. And there has, in our opinion, nothing has been put forward to make us feel any different.
What do you make of their claim that, it might not excuse all of them, but a large percentage maybe is due to the sort of odd calculation for the trampoline park, which doesn't really fit neatly into our ordinance, and is causing the calculation of required spaces to be hundreds of more than what it might otherwise for the same type of retail space?
And I would go back to your parking. Well, I'll go back to that's what it is. I am not going to comment on whether that's a good zoning ordinance or not. And that's not for this board to comment on either. That's if somebody does not like the terms of the zoning ordinance. It's not for this board to deviate and be like, we don't like it, we're going to find a way to give it to you. The proper mechanism to change that is to go through the process of amending the city's zoning. That's not what you have here. And again, I think other people came forward, and they said, well, what if it's something different? So you're going to, it's a little bit of a snowball effect, and you're opening Pandora's box to say, okay, it's a trampoline park, it's not this, but we're saying it's this, but it's really not this. And then if something else comes in, then we're not going to say it's this, or are we going to say it's this? So where does that give consistency in planning? So those were the two concerns for parking. And again, my client is a direct rebuttal and believes that these reductions in parking or any relief for parking will have a significant negative impact on her property. And again, I don't want to overlook the fact that we didn't agree to this. We didn't say that this application could be filed. We never consented. We never signed an application for this to be done. And the condominium association is still in effect.
Is your client the owner of the property but not TD Bank?
She has a lease with TD Bank. The next variance request is variance from Article 28-4, the Table of Dimensions, to allow maximum height of 49 feet, 8 inches, where 45 is allowed. Again, this property, Gateway Performance District, it is a performance district that is subject to certain performance standards, different from your other districts, because you want this project to have a certain look, you want it to have a certain feel, you want it to be aesthetically pleasing. It's one of your gateway properties coming in from the highway. So that's the field when we're thinking about these other requests for relief. This is what we have in front of us. So the applicant is requesting buildings that are in excess of the allowed 45-feet limitation. So the greatest request is to have a building that's approximately 15 feet taller than what is allowed. This building, if allowed by this board, will be out of scale with the surrounding buildings, and will appear massive and out of proportion to the nearby businesses, basically towering surrounding properties to include my client, the bank, Applebee's, you have K Jewelers Plaza, you have Aspen Dental, you have Aldi's, you have Shores. This building is going to be a monstrosity compared to these others. And that's not what is supposed to be happening in this district. This district is made to adhere to certain aesthetic and performance standards. So it is going to affect the character of the neighborhood by completely changing the dynamic of the scale of the buildings that are currently existing. So you're going to have these three buildings, residential buildings, that are massive and towering over all of the other, well, not all, I don't know if there's other ones that are larger, but I do not know of any, going to tower over the existing buildings that are there, altering the character of the neighborhood, which means that this variance request does not even meet the first criteria. And then if you go to the second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Again, the Gateway Performance District is established, and I'm going to read it again, to provide for well-designed, large-scale commercial development along arterial streets at entrances to the city. Permit it uses will be commercial and may include mixed developments of retail, restaurant, service uses. And the most important thing is that any development within this district are expected to adhere to high standards for appearance in order to ensure that the gateways to the cities are attractive and functional. That is your spirit for this district. Allowing a building 15 feet higher than what is allowed that's towering over everything is contrary to that spirit. Substantial justice is done. Again, that's the balancing act. My client is directly affected by this. It's a huge loss to her, and there's also a loss to the general public. The city has worked hard, and I reviewed your planning documents, to have certain districts look a certain way as part of your long-range planning. These documents call for this area to have a certain look. That's what the public has wanted. You now allow these variance requests. You are now going contrary for the gain to the public. The public is now, they're not gaining, they're losing because the overall design scheme for the city is now changed because you're allowing this particular development to basically blow apart all of the performance standards for the Gateway Performance District. Number five, we already talked about, I'm not going to go through that one again. I'm going to go to the second variance request, Section 28-24J, Table of Principal and Accessory Uses, to Allow Atire Center Where It Is Prohibited in the Gateway Business. And for the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The granting of the requested variance will be contrary as it will affect the health, safety, general welfare of the area, or alter the character of the neighborhood as the proposed use of attire center is not in line with the overall planning scheme of the Gateway Performance District. This proposed use, and this is interesting, this proposed use is only allowed by right in two of the city's zoning districts, and that is your commercial highway and your commercial general. And it's purposely not allowed in any of your performance districts. So there's a reason why it's not allowed. And that is because these districts are supposed to admit a certain feel for the city. You go to the spirit of the ordinance being observed. Another approach to determine whether the granting of the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, and welfare. The Gateway Performance District is constructed to promote an overall design feel, and allowing attire center is contrary to that intent. So again, can't stress enough, this is your gateway performance. Tire centers are only allowed in two districts for a purpose, your commercial highway, your commercial general, not allowed in gateway performance for a reason. That reason is to adhere to the spirit and intent of what the Gateway Performance District is supposed to do. Substantial justice. This, again, results in a balancing act. The loss to the public is far outweighed by any gain to the applicant as there are numerous other uses allowed in the Gateway Performance District that the applicant or the owner can avail itself of. That's not what's happening here. They want a use that's not allowed. Again, my client has great concerns over the whole overall design, given the traffic concerns. Now you're adding another use to this property that's not an allowed use that could generate significant traffic, and other concerns that are not appropriate for the Gateway Performance District. Values of surrounding properties. Again, there's been no evidence submitted that the allowance of a tire shop is not going to have any negative effects. The next one is a variance from Article 24-1C, the minimum lot frontage to allow lot frontage to be calculated based on the combination. I put this front and forward. I'm going to say it again. We did assign the application. The application's not complete. The board has no authority to act upon it.
Can I ask you something? Because on the plans that they've submitted, they show that parcel is being owned by the Thomas E. Graham Irrefutable Trust and Eleanor C. Graham Irrefutable Trust.
I think that might be the Applebee's one.
No, it's TD Bank.
Nope. They bought it several years ago, so I'm not quite sure why that's the case. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it does say that.
In addition to the proposed request, I'm just going to add for food for thought for the board, is they are now saying, we're going to give you road frontage on two public streets, but we don't have a curb cart. My client doesn't have a curb cart. We don't have a curb cart to get onto Sheep Davis. We don't have a curb cart to get onto this new proposed street. And it looks like they are saying that we can have access on one of their proposed access ways. There's been no discussion about any proposed easements to allow us access, nothing. So basically, they're trying to take a lot, put it somewhere, and be like, you'll be fine. That's not the case. And again, we did not consent to that. The next variance request is from Article 28-77J, Illumination of Parking Areas, to Allow Light Posts at 36 feet, 6 inches, where 25 feet is the maximum. And I know there's a discussion about, well, why do you have that? There's many reasons why cities, not just the city of Concord, enact regulations as to the height of lamp posts. And those reasons are, and this is contained, for the spirit and intent, your ordinance is great, it talks about why you have this. What is the spirit and intent of requiring the 25-foot maximum height limitation? And that spirit and intent is that lighting fixtures shall be designed to minimize glare and sky glow. That's why you have it. So when people have asked, why do you have it? This is why you have it. You have it to minimize glare and sky glow. So when you go back to the five criteria, allowing significantly taller light posts will alter the character of the neighborhood, especially in conjunction with the overall design scheme of the project and the various other variance requests. There is no evidence presented regarding light spill over, and I know that could be a planning board issue, and I'm aware of that. But there's nothing that was talked about. Light pollution, that is, in my opinion, a zoning board issue. The illumination, that may be planning, but the light pollution, that's something that this board needs to consider. When you have those significantly higher or taller light posts, there's the possibility of, what your zoning talks about, the sky glare, the sky glow and the glare. And that is going against Criteria One, the public interest, and the spirit of the ordinance. And again, a higher, larger, a taller light post where only 25 is allowed in the Gateway Performance Districts, that you must adhere to certain performance standards, that's the spirit of this zoning, that's not being met here. Because now you're asking for increased buildings, less parking, taller light posts, taller buildings, all contrary to the spirit of what the Gateway District is providing. Substantial justice, again, the loss to the public is outweighed by any gain to the applicant as there could be potential light pollution, sky glow, and glare. The values of surrounding property, again, my client being a direct rebuttal does not want to have all of these significantly taller light fixtures that will, in her opinion, have a negative effect on her property and her property value. And the literal enforcement, I'm going to skip, we already talked about that. I'll go to the next one, which is variance from Article 28-713C, Design Standards for Loading Spaces, to Allow 12-feet-wide loading spaces where 14 is the minimum. And I just thought it was interesting because I know there's another request where they wanted the driveway to be 30. So I personally am having a hard time reconciling those two things. So you're saying you want to have a bigger drive aisle because you have all these trucks, and you're concerned with different things coming in, and the size of the tractor trailers and stuff happening. So you have these concerns, but these concerns aren't flowing over to now making the loading stalls smaller than what they should be. So I'm not quite sure how, I'm not able to reconcile that. I'm just putting that out for the board for food for thought. So when you think about, again, the spirit and intent for this particular portion of the city's zoning, your city's zoning did another wonderful job of saying what the spirit and intent is and why you have this 14 minimum. It doesn't say it has to be 14, and that's interesting. It's saying it has to be the minimum of 14. So you can go bigger, but it's, we want you, be a minimum to have 14. And the reason why we want you to have that is because we want, meaning the city, we want loading spaces to be designed to allow a delivery vehicle to maneuver safely and conveniently. That's the spirit and intent. That's why you have it. And if you look at your zoning, it says each loading space shall be a minimum of 14 feet wide. Not that's what we want, we want a minimum. So that's telling you, if you wanted it bigger, we probably would not think that that's a bad idea for the reasons that I just stated, which is right from your zoning for the spirit and an intent. So again, the public interest, you have health and safety concerns for minimizing narrowing the loading spaces. The spirit, I already went through the spirit. Substantial justice, again, if you can't properly maneuver the traffic in this parking lot, it's going to result in congestion, it's going to result in accidents, it's going to result in disruption to the overall traffic flow and scheme in the particular plaza, spilling over potentially to my client's plaza, and then spilling over into the arterial roadways. The value surroundings property is the same thing that we've already spoke about. And I know, I believe there was discussion about, well, if we are granted 12, the planning board's going to look at it. I disagree. If you're granted, the applicant has granted the variance for 12 feet, there's nothing more for the planning board to look at. You gave them the 12 feet. They get the 12 feet. The next variance request is from 28-714E, the screening of the refuse containers, not to screen them. Again, the spirit of enclosing, I think this is common sense, is spirit for enclosing any type of refuse containers as for aesthetic purposes. I think when you have a development, people want to see where the trash is located, they want that to be screened, whether it's a trash compactor or any type of refuse container, that's why you have the screening. And it makes sense. If you're going into Costco, I'm sure Costco prides itself on having a beautiful facility, and people, when they go, they are not expecting to see Costco's trash containers. Or if you go into any well-established commercial development, you don't want to see the trash containers. It's unsightly. I mean, the pictures that were shown there, that's not a pretty refuse container. It's a refuse container. I don't think there's such a thing as a pretty refuse container. It should be screened. It should be shielded, it should have the fence around it. And again, that's why you have the performance standards for your Gateway Performance Districts, which is this property. And so by granting this variance, it would be contrary to the public interest. The public interest provides an overall neat and clear appearance and protects from animals and other critters from getting into the containers and creating a mess. The spirit would not be observed in this case if this variance was granted. Again, it's also talking about the health, safety, and welfare. Your ordinance is clear, they want a six-foot fence. In some cases, they want landscaping buffer, that doesn't apply here. But the purpose and the spirit and intent of installing a fence and landscaping, which I know is not applicable here, is to prevent the containers from becoming a visual eyesore to people. To not screen this is contrary to the spirit. The substantial justice argument is the same. It's a loss to the public, in particular, a great loss to my client. Again, she wants people to come to her property, to her business. If you have a site that is not properly designed, and again, you see the design, they want people to come into their site to access my client's property. That's problematic, especially if you have a site that's not properly developed. That is very problematic for my client, and she is at a great loss for that. I believe that was all of my objections. I just wanted to do a quick look at my notes because I know I've said a lot of things. I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
I think you got all of them.
And I do want to just comment on, I know a lot of the public interest arguments that were made to this board was the interest in redeveloping underperforming properties. In my opinion, that's not necessarily the correct analysis for the spirit and intent for this and the public interest for that. I understand that the public wants to see properties that are developed, but they want to see them developed in a proper way. They want to see your planning, guiding documents be utilized in an appropriate way. They want projects that meet the spirit and intent of your zoning, and that are not visual eyesaws, and that blend in well with the existing area. And I did notice one other thing. In your zoning, part of your variance criteria stated that the relief sought should be the minimum necessary to result in reasonable use of the property, and that's Section 28-9-3C2. So that relief sought is to be the minimum necessary to result in reasonable use of So that relief sought is to be the minimum necessary to result in reasonable use of the property. That's not what's happening here. There's a lot of reasonable use that you can do on a fifty-one-acre property in the city of Concord, and the relief sought is definitely not the minimum, again, in violation of the city's zoning. I think that's it.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who, else who wishes to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
Mr. Pollak, would you like to offer any factual clarification?
So, as you know, this application started in January, and we've had a number of delays in getting to this evening. Used to be a guy on the radio when I was a kid, Paul Harvey, and his line was, "And now you know the rest of the story." And you do. I have tremendous respect for Attorney Gandia, for her law firm, for her colleagues. So this impasse is regrettable, unfortunate. But it's all for a reason, of course. And I don't want to spell it out any more clearly, but I would ask the board to consider, why would the operator of a bank facility or the owner of a pad leased to a bank that's operated there for years, that has the same tall light posts in front of their building as the mall, that has seen what this facility has become over the recent years, or not-so-recent years, it's been blighted for a long time? Why would they take exception to a redevelopment of a unique fifty-acre parcel? Why would they want it to stay the way it is? The answer is because their interests are different than those of the community. And only with those different interests would they oppose a tire center in the interior of a retail box, the width of a loading dock, the drive width of aisles that are not near their pad. Those are the only, the only reason that they would take issue is because they've made a strategic decision to take issue with everything. And that's okay, and that's their right. The issue of frontage, we don't pretend to control their lot. What we tried to do was present options for the independence of their property. We obviously have to provide for access and maneuverability and some degree of common infrastructure to be able to come and go reasonably. Or if we don't, there won't be agreement amongst the condominium owners to dissolve the condominium form of ownership. It's that simple. We're trying to have the flexibility to offer something that we think would be advantageous to all sides of the fence. There was a description of ten variances must mean that the project is not well-defined. Well, number one, there are eight types of variances, and six of them deal with the Costco property. Coverage, loading base, compactor, driveway width, poles, tires. How is that not a solid design to do exactly what Costco does in all the other places where they exist very successfully? And to ask them to do something different means they take the risk, and they may not do it. There's no shared parking in the condominium, the reason being that the bank lot has sufficient parking according to the ordinance. I bank at that bank, I go there, never had a problem parking.
So are you saying that what Attorney Gandia said was mistaken?
Which item are you referring to?
She said that there was a provision in the condominium documents that permitted her client to park off the property.
I believe there is a provision to share the infrastructure of the condominium, the private roads and drives that are within this land area. I'm not familiar with any sort of coesement that says park wherever you want if you're going to the bank.
Okay.
Does her client own the condominium unit?
Does her client own, I believe so.
Is that condominium unit the land?
Yes.
Did they have to sign the application?
I don't know that they had to sign the application because, again, it's a condominium form of government and, or form of ownership. And my client owns ninety-eight percent of the square footage of the condominium. So what you're asking me really is a governance question. I don't specifically, as I sit here right now, know the answer, and I certainly don't want to make a misrepresentation. But I can concur that a redevelopment of the entirety of the mall, which is what is proposed, would require unanimous consent. And we're trying to gather the tools that we need to present what we think would be an attractive option. And, of course, one of the reasons we took the long time out was to try and resolve these things so that you didn't have to bear witness to this laundry. We failed, we're here, and now you have to bear witness.
Can I ask a question about the, the frontage variance request? It's phrased to allow frontage to be calculated based on the combination of the corner lot rather than along one street.
Right.
But we, the way I kind of think about it, we don't have the, the ability to redefine how the calculation is made, we only have the ability to grant a variance for frontage, right?
So you, we're not asking you to change the dimension of three hundred feet of frontage. We're asking you to recognize that in this circumstance of a corner lot, that frontage can be amassed by turning the corner, and you'll have a portion of the frontage on 106 Sheep Davis, you'll go around the corner, and then you'll have a portion on what is intended to be a private, I'm sorry, a public road that is controlled by the city. So the roadways would qualify as frontage, but you only get to the required dimension if you're, if you would agree as a board to allow us to count the corner, go around the corner.
Or to grant a variance for less frontage.
I suppose that's another option. And frankly, we didn't think we needed to do that because the corner description seemed a lighter lift, and it seemed as if it would be more attractive to our abutting condominium unit owner because it would essentially be saying, we're not changing anything about what you've got. You have a bank today, you have a bank tomorrow. They're happy, you're happy, everybody's happy, but they're not happy. Couple other quick things.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So you want to count, I mean, you could, the corner, I mean, the corner could be looked at on both sides, right? Because there's also the, the corner on Loudon and Demonte.
So that would be off of their condominium unit. The unit has a boundary as well as the lot, right?
Oh, I see. Oh, the Applebee's is not even in this condominium, so.
No, the Applebee's is a different unit within the condominium.
Get it back up.
Yeah, but, so, I mean, think of it this way, and this is why condominiums are the bane of my existence. The entirety of the lot is one parcel per city, GIS and rule and whatnot. But within that parcel, it is divided into units.
Right.
And in those, there are three in this case. One is Applebee's, and their affiliate owns that. One is the bank, and their landlord owns that. And one is the mall proper, and my client owns that. So there are three condominium unit owners for this land condominium.
And three tax lots.
There are three taxed parcels. I would not use the phrase lot, they are units.
And that's Applebee's, the bank, and the rest of it.
Mall proper, correct.
So getting back to Laura's question, I wonder, do we have any precedent for who can bring an application?
For a condominium unit.
For a condominium unit. Do we have any precedent for, I mean, that's, you don't have to.
I don't know.
I'm inclined to table that application and talk to the city solicitor.
Because that would go to every single, I mean, if she's right, obviously, you know, you hope she's not, but if she's right, then that obviously would.
Well, like I said, now you know the rest of the story. We had, we had hoped to make this question irrelevant.
Right, of course, of course.
And so.
We can't, yeah.
And so, at this moment, we're not asking the zoning board of Concord to opine on how to dissolve the condominium, what's required to do that. We're, yeah, and I don't know how you would. We're, we're asking for a tool that we could use to make an attractive, we think attractive offer to, and a butter, and a butter within, a unit of butter, not a lot of butter. The phrasing is important. There, I wanted to just make a couple other points before I'll finish. The design was described as a monstrosity. That word made me shudder because all I can think of is what's there now. That's a monstrosity. So much so that we're pursuing demolition ahead of the redevelopment because what's there has become a very attractive nuisance, the source of vandalism and violence, and it's a drain on everyone's resources, including the city. Also, this board well knows that anything that goes forward to the planning board will require architectural design review. That is a process that is intended to avoid monstrosities at its extreme, hopefully result in something tasteful. And we've gone through the slide deck in the past. If David would indulge me one more time and go to the folder and go to the slides on the bottom file and piece through these, you know, pretty quickly, you will see some renderings at the end here. Yep, keep going. Right, these are concepts that are representative of what we're trying to do, and many of these have been worked on by the same architectural group that we're using. So that, these are not just, we think we can do it, these are, we have done it. And if you keep going, please. Yeah, these are the streetscapes. I think we can all agree that that's a lot better than a boarded mall. And if you go to the next one, and next one, there's, yeah, the, the ones on the bottom here, these are representative of what we have in mind for the public gathering space near the water body. I mean, you know, is it a water body today? Technically, it's got water in it. But I think it could really be something nice. And these are the ideas that we've gotten. Like I said, we went to the construction commission. Oh, there's the dock with somebody throwing a line. God knows what they would catch today, but who knows what the future holds, and you've got to start somewhere. So these are the types of amenities that are, that are on the table, and they are in no shape or form monstrosities. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Pollak? Thank you very much. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of both hearings, both cases closed. What do we got, nine o'clock? I suspect that the first thing for us to do is to consider the question of whether or not we have a proper application in front of us. And what I want to do is go around the table and discuss it with all the board members. There was one point that Attorney Gandia made that I think, as far as, I'm concerned, we can dispense with immediately, and that is that we have the authority to grant variances to any provision in the ordinance.
Absolutely.
No matter what the language says.
Absolutely.
If it's part of the zoning ordinance, we can grant variance to it if we find the criteria are met. So any argument based on that, I consider to be unconvincing. And I'm willing to set it aside. The technical question of whether or not the application was complete because of who didn't, didn't sign off on it, I have ambivalent feelings about. And I'd be interested to hear what my fellow board members think, starting with Ms. Specter Morgan, who has a misfortune of sitting to my right.
Yeah, that's my only misfortune. I think the only one I'm concerned about is the lot frontage one. I'm not concerned that they didn't sign off on the larger application, but the lot frontage one does directly affect their lot. And so I, I.
The parking, not so much?
No, I'm not worried about the parking.
Okay.
So I do, I do think that is something that would be good to have the solicitor weigh in on.
Okay. Andrew, how do you see it?
Can I ask you a question about that? So I take it that your view is that it, the, the applicant doesn't, it doesn't require all condo units, any condo owner can make a variance request that's relevant to them? The issue with frontage is that then that also affects the other condo owners.
So my experience with condominiums, and it's limited, is that the board directors can make a decision as to what to do with the condominium. And here, where Onyx is the ninety-eight percent, I'm sure they control the board of directors. So I'm sure they have the authority to do that. Where this directs, directly affects this unit.
And only this unit.
And only this unit, that would be my concern.
I think, I think you're probably right. We would assume that they control the board of directors, but with, you know, we don't know for sure. I mean, it is possible, because we don't know what their condo contract says. It might say each unit gets.
But that's not our job.
Exactly.
No, and, and condo documents were not submitted.
Exactly. So without, without knowing, I would, you know, I would tend to think that we would need a statement from the board of directors.
I'm going to say this, if the condominium documents were clear, that all the owners needed to sign off on it, they would have been presented. There is not a doubt in my mind.
Yeah, no, I'm sure that's true.
How does it look to you, Mark?
Being new to the board, I don't really feel equipped to answer.
I'm not new to it, and I don't feel equipped to answer either. I mean, I'm not going to try. Give it a go.
I would ask what we, the adult daycare on Loudon Road recently, that was a condominium trip, right?
Yeah, and that was just that unit.
But I can't remember what was submitted. I mean, I guess it's at their risk. I mean, if we, there'd be a pretty basic appeal if, if, if they didn't even have the authority, and I mean.
Nothing we do gives them that authority.
Right, presumably, the applicant wouldn't want to take that risk if they didn't feel pretty confident about it. You know, because, so, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable moving forward with the substance of the variances, although I, you know, that, we just don't have a lot of precedent for that, but I, I think your assumption is probably correct.
Nick, how do you see it?
I'm not the lawyer, but I'm going to go along with Andrew and Laura's perspective on this.
Okay.
I'm happy to dodge the frontage one for tonight. Is that an option?
Yes.
I would table that one for tonight.
I think, I would be comfortable doing that because of the reasons that Laura and Andrew gave. I, I'm not too concerned that we're treading on forbidden ground by considering the rest of it, partly because as Mr. Pollak pointed out, for the whole project to happen, they're going to have to be able to dissolve the condominium. And I, I also have no way of knowing what the reasons are why the, the bank property owner would oppose all of the other elements that, in some cases, they can't even see. So I'm not sure I have the whole story in hand about that, but I, so I think we simply have to take the case on its merits, table the one and act on all the others.
And if they can't, if they can't get approval for, from the, from the bank owner or the lot owner on the frontage, I guess they could, they could just come back with a different variance just for the frontage that they control, right? I mean, it's, it's that cor, it's because they're using the corner lot theory that it really invokes the bank.
They'd have to come back with a different.
Some different theory.
Some different plan.
If it, if it turns out this isn't really about zoning.
Yeah.
They'll come back with something.
Yeah, they'll figure it out.
Okay. We've seen that before.
Yes.
So, very good. Then I think, then the next question I would ask.
So do you want to do the motion to table right now?
Yes, sure, let's, let's deal with that.
So I'll do a motion to table the variance from Article 28-41C, Table of Dimensional Regulations, Minimum Lot Frontage, and to refer the question to the city solicitor as to whether the condominium unit owner is required to sign that variance application for us to consider it.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Very good. The request is tabled, pending advice from the city solicitor, and we will carry on with the rest of the items on the agenda. And that leads me to poll the board on how we want to do this, because we're dealing with certain different charac, the character of each of these requirements, this request is a little bit different. It's clear that we need to consider Case 0142 as its own element because it's separately listed on the agenda, and it's a separate case. So, I think we can all agree that we will do it that way unless I'm hearing otherwise from anyone, but it looks like I'm not. So, the next question has to do with the other requests, and it seems to me that probably the prudent thing, given how many of them there are, would be to go through them one by one. Now, do you agree with that, or do you, would you like to group them in any way? Obviously, the hours late and efficiency is important, but...
I can group them all but one.
You can group them all with one, which would be the number of parking spaces?
Well, no, because we're doing that one separately anyway, right?
Yes. Oh, okay, right, yeah.
The other ones, I can group them all together except for lot coverage.
Okay. So, driveway widths, illumination, design standards, screening of refuse containers, principal use of the tires.
Yep.
Maximum height.
Yep.
Okay. Does the rest of the board feel comfortable with that?
So, discuss, vote, discuss, vote, discuss, vote, or big discussion, vote, vote, vote.
No, it would be discussing one vote.
Big discussion, big vote.
So, if you don't feel comfortable...
We don't have to do it that way.
We don't have to do it that way. This is, it has to be unanimous here, because we can go through it one by one, and there's no weight on any group says that's the way they want to do it.
I think we should each give our viewpoint as to each of them, or at least any of them that we want to, and then, you know, then we'll know if we should...
That's where I was going.
Excellent idea. How'd you like my job?
We voted you should keep your job.
Yeah, you did. Okay. Does everyone feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, let's do that. Let's start by discussing, I might as well take them in order, the Table of Dimensional Regulations, Maximum Height. They want 59 foot eight inches where 45 feet is allowed. How does that look to you, Nick?
Looks fine to me.
Your rationale, what do you think?
I think, given the size of the lot, it's a huge with multiple uses, that I think it would certainly fit in with the character of that area.
Okay. Laura?
Let me give sort of an overarching statement about how I feel about all these variances.
I have a feeling I...
And then come back. Look, I, I know that the site needs to be redeveloped, and this is a perfectly fine way to do it, and I know people are excited about this, and I know that, for the most part, except for the parking one, these are just sort of no-big-deal variances. Why are these things in zoning? I don't know. Why are these particular requirements in zoning? I don't know. But it's not my job to know. It's my job to say, are the variance criteria met? And for the height variances, in fact, for all of the variances, I think there's no diminution of surrounding property values. I think they're not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I think they're not going to create a health, safety, or welfare problem, and I think substantial justice will be done. But I don't think there's hardship that arises from the property for the vast majority of them, including the height variances. I think the need for the height variances arises, and Attorney Pollak said it, out of the desire to get a particular number of units, and you simply can't fit them all in this lot. While I understand that, and I appreciate that, I don't think that's a basis for a variance.
Andrew?
I think that, and I'm kind of guided by the, the location in the city, and the lot, it's obviously a unique lot in that it's, it's a unique size, and it has an existing structure on it that has been described as blighted and very unpopular, and sort of makes development of that lot challenging. And by the fact that the city, I think it's reasonable to consider this, the strong need for housing in the city, and the number of units that they propose putting on here that the city certainly needs, and we, you know, I'd say at least half, if not more, of the cases we see involve housing, and in almost all of those cases, neighbors or somebody can legitimately complain, this doesn't belong here, it's difficult, and those are challenging cases for us because we're trying to balance out. This is the one location in the city where, and no disrespect to the, to the bank owner, because I, you know, I think that, that was well presented, and, but, it doesn't, it's the one spot that said you can put this many units and with minimal impact on the general character of the neighborhood. So, I think that, that policy is something that should guide us in considering these variances, because, you know, as we've said with many different kinds of cases, like the Market Basket case comes to mind, the church, the redevelopment of the congressional, congregational church, if we don't grant some kind of variance, multiple variances, really, they're not going to be able to really do anything with the property. So, so that, that's kind of my perspective on it.
I'm with Mr. Winters on, I feel like any type of development with this property is going to trip some kind of variance. I don't see anyone clamoring to build a single-family house in this lot. So, I would also lean into the infill argument. That's what, the height and the parking, for me, anyway.
Okay. This may be a simpler vote than I thought. I'm inclined to agree that the peculiar characteristics of this lot do create hardship, and it has to do with the scale of the existing development, the scale of the property itself, and the challenges involved in redeveloping it, which relate in my mind to the question of, can you use the property in a reasonable way without a variance? And there's nothing in any of these requests for a variance that make me think that, that hardship doesn't apply to those requests. The size, the heights of the buildings has to do, and I think in terms of the intent of the ordinance, the scale of buildings next to other buildings, and what they do to a neighborhood. And as Andrew pointed out, these buildings are all by themselves in a very large piece of property, and my guess is that the increase in height would make a very little difference in terms of the visual impact, architectural impact of the buildings. The lot coverage is improvement over what's there now, generally our attitude toward lot coverage and other similar situations is if you're making it better and the use is reasonable, then, then...
Oh, I'll vote in favor of the lot coverage one.
Okay.
That's why I said I could call that one out.
Okay. Where else were we?
We started with height.
Yeah, we started with height.
Yeah, we started with heights, driveway widths. I've heard a pretty convincing argument that driveway width is a safety requirement. Go ahead.
Are we going to do them all? Because I didn't do any of the Costco ones.
Okay.
I just did the height one. I thought we were doing them at a time.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay. Then, why don't we, gee, I was making such a good speech.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Right. So, we've talked about the maximum height. Let's go back to the, and as I just said, I don't have a problem with the height for the reasons I just gave, so we can leave that one behind. How about the tire center?
Should we, should we do all the Costco ones?
Do you want to do all the Costco ones at once?
Okay. Tire center, back up to the garage door, and the trash, and what else was there? Well, Costco effectively wanted the wider driveways, too.
Yeah.
Was there anything else?
Number two, the tire center.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Tire center.
Well, lighting applies to the whole site, though.
Driveway, lighting.
Yeah. You want to put lighting in one package?
Yeah.
Okay.
And loading spaces.
All right. Well...
And screening the trash compactor.
Okay. In the interest of efficiency, why don't each one of us talk about those?
Yeah, let's just do that.
And I'll start at your end of the table, Mark, because you caught me up short and about to make an egregious error, and I've rescued my reputation, and I thank you for that.
The tire center, unfortunately, I don't know if I see the hardship for tire center specifically. I don't know, like Whole Foods or Market Basket would not ask for that, so I don't know if I see the hardship on that. The lighting, I, I'm really indifferent. I need convincing one way or the other. The photo of the location didn't really do anything for me. I don't, I assume that was presented in good faith, but it could have been photoshopped. I don't know. Driveway width, I'm, this one I don't get because it looks like there's an access to the dumpster, so I'm confused as to why the trucks would need to go down the parking aisles. I think leaving it at the smaller width is a safer idea, just for the people shop. I, I don't, I think the wider aisle width encourages speeding, not by the trucks, but by shoppers, so it's a safety thing for me. The loading area, I'd be curious to know what Concord's history, as I'm sure we all are, why that is the way it is, but I, yeah, it doesn't, I don't have a preference, I guess. The screening, I could see the argument for that being an easier way to keep the area clean. I think, to Mr. Schweickert's point earlier, maybe we could condition it that as, they can take away the screening as long as it's not a traditional dumpster. I think that's more meant for a traditional dumpster in stray trash, it's containing stray trash versus it already being contained in the compactor. That's where I'm at with Costco.
Okay. Andrew, what do you think about the other Costco requirements?
I'm inclined to, to approve them. I think, you know, I don't have, I don't have the, really, the ability to fully understand that, you know, the, the safety or issues with the driveway widths, the loading spaces, but, I mean, traditionally, when we're looking at big projects like this, like unique projects, I mean, we've, we've, we've been willing to grant fairly modest, I mean, you know, they're all, with the exception of the height, the, the dimensional requests are all pretty modest, and, you know, they presented some technical experts as to why, and I don't really have a reason to contest that, and I don't really see it impacting the character of the neighborhood or the neighbors. As far as, and I don't really have any reason to think it'd be less safe or less attractive. As far as the tire center, I mean, it's a, it's a relatively small piece of a much larger operation. They're trying to get a good, you know, a good anchor tenant in there, which is not, you know, a simple thing to do, and if, you know, if Costco historically offers tires, and Sears did it before, and it didn't, it didn't really cause a problem, I, and it's going to be so tucked away, it's not, it's not like it's going to be right near any of the neighbors. I don't see it really, you know, causing any, any disturbances. So, yeah, I'd be inclined to grant, grant all of those.
Laura, Costco ones.
I don't disagree with anything Andrew said, but, again, the request for these variances arises from the Costco business model, not from the property. This is a great situation for rezoning, but it's not a great situation for a variance.
Nick?
I'm inclined to agree with Andrew. I think the tire center, we had one there years ago. It's certainly not going to be visible other than the signage upon the door. I think the 30-foot widths, we're only dealing with a two-foot difference. It's minimal. I think certainly a wider road would tend to probably increase safety. The lights, we're actually reducing them from 40 feet to 36 feet six inches. We heard testimony that is it to meet the requirement of 25 feet, that I have to double the number of lights. And I think the screening, I think, I like Mark's suggestion that as long as it's a compactor or self-contained, that probably screening isn't required, but if they convert to any other kind of trash removal process, then I want to have it screened.
I agree with Nick on all of the particulars there. I think, Laura, Ms. Specter-Morgan makes a very compelling argument. At the risk of being a little too subtle, I think the characteristics of the lot and the peculiar nature of this property and its history suggest that a reasonable use is a use that's going to work there. And we have one that is presented to us that the appellant believes is going to work there, and we have no reason to believe it's not going to work there. The fact that their business model requires some variances fits in with, in my mind, the difficulties of redeveloping a parcel like this, which is what creates hardship in my mind. So, I could be accused of a little bit of sophistry there, but that's, but I'm not going to sit still for it. So, that's why, that's how I justify my concurrence with my colleagues on the subject of hardship with all of the Costco variances, which are numbers, one, two, five, six, seven... Well, yeah, dimensional had to do with apartment houses, I think. Did it not? Yeah. Okay. So, that brings us down to Austria parking, we're going to talk about as a separate case. Driveway widths, we talked about as a Costco issue, I think, notwithstanding Mark's reasonable concerns about having to be over wide, that, that Costco's direct experience with this and the maneuvering of their trucks and their customers is more persuasive to me than my own opinion about what it ought to be. And I think in the area of safety, I'm going to defer to them for the two feet, again, with the same rationale that I gave before. Illumination, here, I think that the, this partly has to do, I think, with the agent status of our zoning ordinance. The height requirement for poles had to do with light spillover, which is something that the appellant did deal with. And it is true that in any project reviewed by the planning board, they look at illumination diagrams that give them a pretty accurate explanation of what the actual light fixtures are going to do, and light fixtures vary a lot. And so, I'm confident that the issue of light spillover is dealt with otherwise, and therefore I would not hold them to having to add a whole lot more light poles to accomplish what I suspect is nothing that, the photometric diagrams are a way of controlling that, and the planning board's perfectly capable of reading those and interpreting. Design standard for loading spaces, as far as I'm concerned, they know it works for them. I don't see any compelling interest in the insisting that they be wider than they believe they need to be, and I don't see that anyone is injured but them if it doesn't work. And screening of the refuse containers, I agree that if, as long as the refuse containers are the, conform, in the form that we were presented, then I think they'll work fine. So, that's my take on all of this. So, it sounds like what we should be doing is dividing this into two pieces.
Oh, we have to do the lot coverage one.
Hmm?
We have to do the lot coverage one.
Right.
So, three pieces. Oh, well.
Three pieces?
Well, we didn't talk about the lot coverage one yet.
Oh, all right. Well, let's talk about what happened to lot coverage here.
Number four.
Oh, number four, I'm sorry. Maximum lot coverage to allow 91%. I said my piece about that before, so how does everybody else feel about that?
I agree with you.
Okay.
It was said that this is actually less lot coverage, a reduction than how the malls use it, right? So, to me, that's, that's per se reasonable because, you know, you have an existing lot with a lot of coverage, and if you're taking it down, even if you can't get all the way, I think that's, that's a reasonable... that's a reasonable use.
I agree. And I know we'll dive into this shortly with the parking application, but I think the demonstrated improvement in parking since January, like you can't have one without the, at this point, like you can't, they're going to trip over each other. So I support it.
Okay. Nick, anything else on lot coverage? All right. So we, are we two pieces or three here? One piece was the heights. Or are we...
You could probably do two.
Two pieces. Which one did you want to break out, Laura?
I want to break out lot coverage because I'm going to vote for that one.
Okay. But you're going to vote against all the others?
Yes.
All right. Is it, is it the consensus of the board that we break it up that way? Or do you want to go through them individually, or do you want to go through them in some other?
Which, do you want to break out any others, Mark?
I'm trying to remember.
Public testimonies, please.
I'm trying to remember which ones I was waiting for more information on. The driveway width, I'm, yeah, I'm a yes on that and the lighting. So, yeah, what Laura said.
Okay. Everyone, all right with that? I mean, obviously, that has to do with how you think you're going to vote, but that's fine. Because we, by now, you know.
Well, I'll move to approve the variance, variance number four, allowing 91 percent coverage.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The variance is granted. All right. Do we have a motion for items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine?
Not five.
Five, not five?
And not five.
Oh. Why is that still on there?
Laura, can you tell them again? One? One, two, four, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Yeah.
Four was already voted on.
I'm sorry.
There's no nine.
One, two, three.
There's nine.
No, not three.
Not three, not four.
One, two, six, seven, eight, nine.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Their agenda is slightly...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the original memo.
I am, too, which is what's caused by confusion.
Let me bring it to you. One, two, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, but there's no nine on the original.
One, two, six, seven, eight.
And eight has the condition.
Driveway, loading space, refuse containers.
Oh, yeah.
That was withdrawn, that was already granted, and that was taken. Okay. So do me one for it. Just stay here for me one second. Which one? One, two. On the original memo, the agenda. Six, seven, eight, nine. You can keep this.
Shouldn't we be working off the agenda, not the memo?
And the screening of the condition?
Very, we should, we should probably work from the agenda because that's what was noticed. Can you loan me your agenda? Because I seem to have lost mine. Who needs an agenda? We don't need a stinking agenda. Okay.
Oh, that's not it. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, there were only eight on the agenda. Five, which was five on the memo is not on the agenda anymore. So looking at the agenda...
I circled the Costco ones.
Right. Okay. So the lot coverage in this one was, was item four.
Correct.
Let's just say, unless you're going to, whatever you're going to do, and just say lot coverage.
It's building height.
Let's just write that. Hold on. Building height.
Light pole height.
Light pole height.
Driveway width.
Driveway width.
Compactor screening.
Compactor screening with the...
Condition, let it be a compactor.
With...
Let it be a compactor.
Condition, yeah.
And the loading spaces width.
Loading spaces width. So I have lot coverage, building height, light pole height, driveway width, compactor with condition, loading spaces width.
We've already done the lot coverage one. We did that one separately.
Take that one out.
And the tire center.
And the tire center.
Okay, hold on one second.
So you should have a total of two, four, six. You should have seven.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six. So I have, I'm going to do it again. Building height, light pole height, driveway width, compactor condition, loading spaces width, and tire center, which is seven.
And lot coverage.
But we did that one already.
You're good.
Yes, you're good.
Okay. So do we all know what we're voting for?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved to do what?
To approve.
Okay.
To approve the remaining six.
To approve, yes.
A motion to approve the variances for building height, blah, 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 right? All of those things are read off.
Yes, everything except lot coverage.
Which we already did.
So there will be seven items.
Yeah.
And six, because we already tabled one.
One, two, three, four, five. I have six items that...
Tabled three.
We tabled lot frontage.
Yep.
We did lot coverage.
This may be by Mr. Walmer.
Okay. Deborah, are you comfortable?
Is there a second?
You got it all? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Do you think, do we have enough for the findings?
You'll read those after, yes.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
No.
The vote is four to one. The variances are granted. That brings us to the...
Parking.
Parking, which is case 0142.
And we're going to, on the agenda version.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which is the same as the memorandum version, I think.
I don't know if the numbers are exactly the same or not.
I don't know.
Number one was the straight-up variance, and number two was the alternative parking arrangements.
Yeah.
And if we grant number one, we don't have to get to number two.
Right. So 1A, B, and C is the same on the agenda as it is in the memorandum, I think. Having...
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Let's take up item one. How does this one look to you, Mark?
I'm fine with it. Not our purview, but the regional housing needs assessment says that Concord needs 600 or more rental units by 2030. So I think they're doing a good faith effort to get us closer, and again, using an infill space and relieving some of the burden on other areas of the city. So I mean, yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think, I mean, as far as 1A, I mean, they're, they're pretty close. I mean, percentage-wise, they're pretty close. There's, and, you know, according to their parking study, which I did look at, I did read, it's, you know, they're hitting the maximum out. As far as B, I mean, it is, on paper, half as many. I think a large percentage of that is based on the stadium or whatever they called it, calculation, which I guess theoretically a casino or a concert hall could move in that trampoline park. That seems pretty unlikely. I mean, if we ran it based on the current use, I mean, if they changed that use to like a, to a casino hall, or, to a casino, would that, would the variance still work? Or is it...
Well, it depends what the new use would be, what the new use was classified as. So right now, it's classified, I think, as an indoor recreational facility, which has its own square footage for parking.
Oh, so if they continue to use it under that classification, it would not re-travel. So that, I mean, that is a risk, but I, to see that as a, as a pretty low risk, I think it's a pretty high...
Wouldn't something of that caliber probably end up tripping other variances? Like, it would probably be pretty major? I don't know.
It could, but it wouldn't trip the parking variance.
Sort of an imponderable...
Yeah, yeah.
What if?
So I'm, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it. As far as two, I'm just, I understand Ari's argument on that, but I'm not, I'm not a big fan of trying to, you know, to try to change that planning board rule. I think we either go with one or, it's in the alternative. So I'm looking at one, not two.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I mean, yes. Do you want me to tell you what I think the hardship is?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So I think the hardship is that the number of spots cannot physically fit on the property, and that, given the absorbent number of spaces that are required, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the ordinance and the application to this property, that the proposed number of spaces are reasonable.
Very good. Mr. Walmer?
Well, I'm okay with 1A and 1C, but I have a little bit of a problem with 1B just because it's such a broad, broad definition of recreational use. And while it's okay now with this current usage, if you had an indoor movie theater or a casino or something like that, I don't know if you can meet the parking requirements in the interest of, in the public interest. So that's my only reservation with item B. And I know you can't condition it to only trampolines or health clubs.
No, we can't take item B out and vote on it separately. My take on it is, I find the VAI report to be quite compelling. The, we've run in, over and over again, we've run into the problem of overbuilding parking in the city. And one of the people who commented from the public mentioned that. And the, they have a professional reputation to protect, and they did some fairly thorough research, I think, into what really is needed there. Now, assuming it's so-called indoor recreation, they weren't assuming it was a trampoline. They were assuming it was whatever the standards they were using calls an indoor recreation. So from my point of view, I feel comfortable with that. So I think that the parking is excessive, therefore there's a hardship created by the space available for it.
You know, I guess if you got something that came in that required a lot of parking, and if they couldn't find parking, they'd go elsewhere. So I guess...
Well, yeah, there is the real world thing that in that part of the town, that part of the city is their problems, not anybody else's.
There's no neighbor who would, no one's going to go park at Sam's driveway and walk through that.
No, but they might park in the residential parking area. That's the only thing.
True. Yeah. But again, that becomes an internal problem for the development.
Yeah, okay.
Which isn't to say that we don't care about it, but it's, I take a little different view of it. So are you comfortable voting on one, all three items, Nick? Or would you...
Yeah, I am, no.
Okay. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the parking variance one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
So number two is moved.
So number two, do we need to table that, or we just...
I vote to find, just find it moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is, again, unanimous. Is there any more business to come before us tonight?
Not tonight, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye.